Good evening, everyone. Please now remind members that these proceedings are being recorded. Can we take the notice of convening this way?
Ready, ready.
The next round is the minutes of the other one meeting, the council number 16 for May 2018. How many minutes have those meetings been?
Ready, ready.
Yes.
Well, it's Dr. Dunbar on page six. That's abstaining from the vote for election, which will be canceled.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest. Members have been asked to spare their declarations of interest on the board at the entrance of the chamber. Do any members have any further declarations? I have no good announcements to make. Firstly, I understand that Councillor Amy Wilson has a number of awards to present in relation to the law of his fire and in respect to council state and standard service. Councillor Wilson. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would say I take note from Princey Moore's portfolio to say that I am not so glad. But with great pleasure, as friend, I have six awards to present on my card and on his file. The first award is the National Association of Stuccoed Contractors, and with the award Project of the Year award to Interstuccoed Movement. The second one is the Chartered Institute of Fire and Transport Awards for the year eight, and that was the commendation for the Native Project Award for the year eight. The third award is the Blue Site Award, which was awarded in Edinburgh for a designated by the team to go before and beyond in making considerable contractors to community, leaders, employees and school contractors. The fourth award, Madam Mayor, is the Sycamore Pride Award for the Sunday in the North East. It was awarded the Silver Award for Regional Campaign and Wever to send to Sunday in which was awarded to Newcastle for media and public relations with the social media engagement video and talk. The fifth award, Madam Mayor, is the Ice Chicken Special Project Award, which was awarded to Sunday in. And one of the things that's been tried in this is the Ice Lobble, which was taken seriously. This was extraordinary, extraordinary work of the Lord of the World. On the night Ice President Professor Lord of Mersey, this year we all host the enchanting for the project, so impressed us that we have added a special award to celebrate all this day and the children's clear anniversary of the Ice, the Ross Stevenson Ice Children's Special Project Award. This project has captured the public interest both in the immediate area and nationally. The scale, the complexity of construction and design of this game has brought the industry of civil engineering and many of its gases to the public's attention. The project team considered many environmental and sustainability issues alongside completing one million miles of road with no lost time accidents. They offer engagement to local community in many ways, involving over 2,000 very good visits to the site. Some of the team will have to the classrooms with the construction master safety side. Ross Stevenson Ice Children's Special Project Award was to the 100% thing they need, promised by a bridge project. The Sunderland City Council has signed. A wide range of consultants with different specialions, including AECOM, G.A. Associates, Jacobs, Borough Hall of Independence, Ruffin and Wodden and noted, Acers and Spain and H and CN Capital. Public relations being carried out by C.T.W. and the main contractors being France and Biggie volumes for the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This morning's conference. Now, please report our week's magazine. Our report on the Sunderland was the third best of 390 local authority areas in the U.S. for food hygiene in 2016-17. The might think by the life of the day that her vibe is so sunny, as you see. Government agents do the short say to work with all the authority, environment and health departments in respect of food safety and quality amongst each area of the standards of food hygiene. The numbers and inspections and the star ratings are notified by each law authority to the food standards agency. And it is this data that shows an elder food presence and in part for work on better or better parts of the country. To be the third best area for food hygiene in the country is a glorious achievement, especially when you consider almost all the people in the local authorities in the top ten best performing places that largely govern areas and don't have problems associated with urban life today with food and food hygiene and need to save these films for this very place in our city's culture well in this regard. My smart, our environment and health staff and in this in our food businesses and in working hard to ensure that food source in the city is safe and sustainable and I believe in the commercialization. Thank you. Let's have a full aware that there's a report as a human resources committee on the agenda regarding the appointment of a new chief executive for the council. Subject to council, if you can report, I would like to take the opportunity to highlight that this will be the last council meeting for our chief executives. Many of you will remember that Irene had previously worked for the council in various roles in culture, leisure, public works and as assistant chief executive before moving on to South Tyneside Council as chief executive. In 2018, Irene then worked as a government. Irene joined the council in 2016 as chief executive, initially on a mission basis. Then launched the setting, the human resources management, council chain, Irene, who raised stability and continuity after time change. I understand the legal council, who likes to save people.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, what dare I say about Irene? Irene's been our chief executive for the last two years, but she has an illustrious and distinguished and can I say, long career, not only in local government, but in Sunderland itself. I understand that Irene first began working for the council in 1977, so according to my maths, that's 41 years ago. Forty-one years ago. I'm not wishing to give favor here, as perhaps I don't even need to do that with her anymore, but that must mean she really was just two years old at the start, as she often states, if you listen. Before joining Sunderland, Irene had been a manager at South End for Sherbrooke Council, where apparently Mecca Leisure ran many of the facilities. So it must have been a foolhouse for her when she decided to join Sunderland. Was that the whole of it? Now, during the next following 25 years at Sunderland, Irene worked in culture, leisure, public works and as assistant chief executive before she moved up the road to become the chief executive at South Tyneside Council. So Irene has already collected several gold stars and then in 2008, she got her gold. Sorry, I mean her CBA in the Queen's Honours. And if you're wondering, as some of you might, what a CBE stands for, it is commander of the most excellent order of the British Empire. And Irene was awarded highest for services to local government. This was 10 years ago, when she's already completed 31 years of outstanding service to our communities. And then what does she do by way of retirement? She goes to buy all. And in going to buy all, she was described as a high flyer, appointed as director general of local government, not less, in the Department for Communities and Local Government. So that's Irene in work, but what about outside of work? She's a staunch Sunderland fan and I also know how much she's working hard to ensure that the council continues to have good working relations with the club, even though it's had ups and downs. I also understand that when not at work, Irene, otherwise known as Mrs. Hayes, Chair of Hayes Travel, enjoys travelling. Now, with again, according to my maths, some 27 years of service at her council under her belt, I dare say there might be a few anecdotes around, but I'll tell you about the one that I was made aware of the day after it happened. And it was when, should you recall from the city's chief police officers on a Saturday about short notice road closures in Rookham, so that Gen Two could undertake some urgent works to the lower the tunnel blocks because of the grandeur tragedy. Having attended to all that, a few hours later, Gen Two staff who had abandoned their weekend plans to come in and help out with the removal of the cladding materials, received a visit from Irene over loaded with boxes of pizza to help make sure they weren't working on an empty stomach and to give basically a lot of that substance to a bunch of people who'd worked incredibly hard. So, as well as a management trainee, a leisure director, a local authority chief executive, a high flyer in the Department for Communities and Local Government, Irene has been able to add a love string to her glory case she needs in retirement and it's that of pizza delivery, Irene. I expect that there are no end to her talents. Seriously, though, I should like to thank Irene for all her hard work and unwavering support for Sunderland since 1977, but especially for the support and work that she's done with Fords over the last two years. Her advice, her contacts, her knowledge, her vision, her calm and collected manner and her love of Sunderland have all been greatly appreciated. I know that we have a great individual starting here with the first of all, this is the new chief executive of Sunderland Council, but I am going to miss the opportunity of working with you personally, because I think that would have been some journey and I know that we have achieved great things. So, thank you very much for me personally. There are three chief councils in the chamber, I want to show the appreciation as well. And good job, well done, chief executive. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like to say a few words of appreciation from the Conservative group. And thank you, Irene, for dealing with everything so very professionally and attentively as regards requests from the opposition, being incredibly open and incredibly helpful to the Conservative councils, both myself at Councillor Francis and previously Councillor Dixon and Councillor Wood. And we do wish you well for the future, and since you've had such a long and distinguished service at Sunderland Council, we feel it would be right if you had free holiday and paid travel.
Councillor Hudson, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo the comments of Queen and her honourable honour in thanking her for her years of service to the city of Sunderland. I'd also like to thank her for the openness, frankness and responsiveness in dealing with the opposition. And in practice, that's meant rapid responses to emails, phone calls, meetings of short notice, which is quite impressive given the work of the chief executive, the big council like a spot. And particularly the willingness to engage seriously and constructively with the opposition in the council, which has not always done so. And I hope they're successful and follow the example in that regard. So I'd like to offer Irene a personal thank you from me, knowing that I am a frequent listener, and on behalf of the Liberal Democrat group, I wish you all the best for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. On behalf of the council, we'd like to thank you for your hard work and dedication to Sunderland and we wish you all the very best in the future. Thank you. That's all good, my nan. Next, we want to hear the section of petitions. Are there any petitions, are there any other petitions? Councillor Harry, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to present a petition. As residents of Bens Houses, we object more strongly to more houses being built on the autumnized school site. This is the only green area left by residents and children during the summer months. It is also used by parents and children as part of the community school. The traffic in Bens Houses is not stopped on the day and night and it's difficult to cross the roads. It also, it would, there is also no places at the Royal Schools. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Hudson. Councillor Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to present this petition on behalf of residents of St Luke's Road. It will have been probably in four. Irene, as I call Sunderland City Council to store heat or additional motors or other such measures to restrict access to the St Luke's Road back lane, which would prevent flight and social behaviour and often, often instance, excuse me, in the back lane, in or for the surrounding fields. And I'd also submit this petition earlier this month as apologies in me, for any of you. And if you manage to address the office of chief exec for distribution, it will return to me and my committee papers, well, unaccepted, but I'd like to say to you.
How many questions are there to be put with chief officer?
Ready, ready.
And do we have any apologies for that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have apologies from councillors Elliot Lawson, Grant Tree, Stuart, Amy Wood and Alden Armistead Greenfield.
And are there any further apologies?
Councillor Anthony Mead.
Councillor George Shaw.
Thank you. And I would want to write a question by members of the public. I will read out the questions which we have received. Can the council investigate the cost of freedom of information requests to council letters? Is it possible that it could be broken down into monthly, quarterly, annual costs so the public can see how much of the council's budget is allocated to these requests? This will be the public's interest as the council budget is already stretched due to government austerity.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council does not record the cost of responding to each freedom of information request, although where the estimated cost of response in respect of an individual request exceeds the fees limit, which is £450 or 18 hours of staff time, officers may reject the request. A record is maintained of the number of requests received and in both 2016 and 2017, average number was 118 per month. And we put further strain on already stretched resources to record the cost of responding to freedom of information requests. Collecting the information applied to requests often involves a number of different officers, sometimes from different service areas, who would have to record their time in longer than a central service area, which would have to be responsible for keeping this information. What else this information may be of interest, it would be of limited assistance to the council as, subject to the application of the fees limit exemption, the council is required to comply with its ruling of obligations with regards to responding to requests regardless of costs. But that does mean, folks, that we are getting roughly 1,400 requests per annum, taking up tens of thousands of hours of work by staff who are already working incredibly hard and the cost could be in the hundreds of thousands of pounds. If you think about how much the fees limit is at £450, though there's no way that we can pin a figure down. So hopefully that answers the question, Madam Mayor.
And I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. That question was sent to me by David Powell. Question two. It's a question from Stephen Clifford. A council member should be representative of their ward. Can it be the council please explain why and how many of its Labour members are allowed to represent areas they do not live in? And that again, leader, so that's them.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Clifford for asking a very interesting question. In honesty, in selecting candidates to stand as ward representative, the Labour Party, like all other parties, complies with government regulations, including residency requirements. But why would we limit this question just for the Labour Party? Why are Conservative and Liberal Democrat members also allowed to represent areas they do not live in? Because when you have a look at the 75 councils in this chamber, can't be less than a third of Labour members represent a ward where they do not live. Exactly a third of Liberal Democrats don't live in their ward and represent.
No, for the hand, but that is an absolute lie. It is telling the whole Liberal Democrat who doesn't live in the area.
Madam Mayor, that's not called a order, that's just his opinion.
No, it's not, babe.
Sit down.
It's a factual statement. It's a factual statement. I've already sent this list as letter to one of your members regarding this. You can't lie.
Councilor lying, and word I mention again that I'm not lying and be very careful of the language you're using as chief because I'm very, very close to losing my patience with you. Thirty-three percent of Liberal Democrats, two out of six as far as council records are concerned, when I ask the question, do not live in the ward they represent. Two out of seven, which is a third. Sixty-two point five percent of Conservatives, five out of the eight, don't live in the ward they represent. I don't think that necessarily leaks any council, if I counsel, it's just that's the way it works. But it does seem that if you are a Sunderland resident wishing to have a ward council that actually lives in the ward, your best bet and only sensible option, as we all know, is the Labour Party, who have been removed. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much. The next council, the next question is from our representative resident of the city. It's fees for foster carers. What will the council go to do to restore faith for all of its TFC public carriers who were put up with so many changes over the years and not had a rise in fees, especially after the down story in the Sunderland depot, regardless of being the lowest paid in the North East? Sunderland £200, Gatesend £300 and South Tyneside £400. Councillor Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Williams for the question because it's well, it's well placed. And as he implies in this question, the payment system for foster carers in Sunderland evolved over many years and had become extremely complex. There were additional payments that weren't in the basic plans, which are quoted in his question. However, in part of the complexity and the need to ensure that we do pay our foster carers appropriately, there have been a review started some time ago and I have too become very impatient for that revised payment and payment strategy to be released. And I encourage the chair of the, to let the children board to ensure that this is agreed, this is agreed by their board at the earliest time possible. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The next question is from Graham Armit. Online minutes of council meeting. For the interests of transparency, I'd like to know why the minutes of council committing an area forum are not published online as a matter of course. That will be councillor Morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the minutes of council cabinet committee and subcommittee meetings are all published online, other than those which relate to what are described as exempt matters, which have been considered in private session due to their nature. Exams of exempt matters include those which identify individuals or are commercially sensitive as they relate to the financial or business affairs of an organisation. The minutes of a meeting are included as a manual for approval on the agenda of the following meeting of that particular body concerned and so are available when the agenda for the following meeting is published. Agendas for meetings are available on the council's website by clicking on the Your Council tab, followed by the Transparency tab, or under the Council Decision Record tab. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you very much, Madam. Councillors, question six. Will the council consider a simple annual register of attendance at council meetings available to the public so it can be seen who attends and who does not? Many councils already do this, and question is from Linda Wood. Councillor Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council is over for a question. While the council does not currently record information about the council's attendance in a single document for publication, certain information can be obtained from the status page of the council's website, which lists the committees to which each member is appointed and on which the minutes of making recorded attendance are available. I ask, however, the present office to ascertain whether this information could be made available in a single document without creating additional pressure on council resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Question six is from Heather Faden, this airshow hospitality. Can you please confirm if councillors and guests will be part of the free catering at this year's airshow? If so, please confirm if this is from the council's budget or what the estimated cost of giving. Councillor.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, the early airshow, the leader, the Pope Woodhall and the mayor will be hosting 27 guests, including veterans and serving personnel in recognition of 100 years of the Royal Airport at a cost of £10 per guest. The £300 is out here within the budget of the event and all collective members are asked if they wish to attend, being at a ticket price of £30, including guests and seniors. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Doctor Helen. The final question from Amy June Humble of Smiles Strubyard. Please confirm if the council have made any financial contribution and how much towards the territory of the former Smiles Strubyard in connection with recent fire. Please outline what involvement the council had in the last three years to try to make this site safe. Councillor Amy Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to begin from over a question. The council take the findings of the St Luke's Airport and to monitor the airport and the emergency cameras for finding the rescue service. The exact cost is yet to be foreaccounted. It is likely to be in the region of £175,000. The council has no direct responsibility to make this site exist to be found, but nevertheless decides if they monitor by this. And I'm sure, Madam Mayor, those members that go for a sudden fire and are measured in the uniform, I do my service.
Thank you very much. We have to respond to those questions. We now do want to report to the council. I thought on the lead, it should be made in the introduction of the report to the council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The doctor's medical school, the United High School.
That's the leader, use the second report.
I said, no, Madam Mayor, reserve the right to speak. No, Madam Mayor, the document regarding the youth services clearly set out a work alone to speak in it. Thank you.
If any man wishes to speak, would you please raise your hand to whether you have and then mention your question. I'll need you to report.
Ready, ready.
And I call on the members of the council to move for the improvement of the doctrine as a report to the committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the report and I would so confirm that neither I nor any member of the executive has any objections to the making of the appointment of chief executive together with the positions of the tunnel officer and electoral registrations officer. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The second report.
I said, no, Madam Mayor, reserve the right to speak.
You guys, would you like to speak to the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to. I'd like to thank the HR Committee, who spent two days on a cross-party basis going through good candidates to come up with a highly recommended firm decision at the end of the day. So that is all I'd like to say, Madam Mayor. It was a good process and I'd like to thank everybody involved.
Thank you very much, Madam. Does anyone have the right to speak? Would you please raise your hand? Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question, Madam Mayor. First of all, can I thank councillor, councillor Warden, councillor Francis, who took part in the interviewing process? Can I ask the Leader of the Council whether he made any requests or representations to take an opportunity to reduce the summary package of the post of Chief Executive, which of course remains as the highest in the area, higher than that of the province?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I inquired regarding the salary that went with the current position and advice was that the salary is commensurate with the post councillor Oliver and it would be unusual for us to see one Chief Executive go out on a salary and then bring a new Chief Executive in and reduce her salary at the same time, when we're looking to bring the best person in here to drive the city forward. So I did ask and I was happy that the advice that was given was sensible and commensurate with what we're looking to do, councillor Oliver.
Councillor Hudson?
Thank you, Madam. I'd just like to say as a member of the committee how well-run the process was and I'd like to thank John Collins and his team on the Human Resources Department of the council for a very professional operation, I think showing the council a good light and the issue procedures worked very well. And I would like to say in regard to actually the issue of the inquiry of Oliver, the subject of a digital at the meeting of the Human Resources Committee, I was surprised actually to hear a cabinet member query why the pay was so high and where this decision was taken, particularly given that in the meeting of this council in March, we actually approved the pay policy review, which set this salary. I was a bit concerned to see that that was news to members of the cabinet because Martin Haswell at that meeting did speak and raise the issue that the salary is so high and we ought to consider adjusting it. There was a Lib Dem amendment which was objected and the Liberal members and the Conservative members of this council voted in favour of that salary. Thank you.
Thank you, the gentleman. And the councillor Hudson, do you wish to reply, Peter? Or are we happy to approve it?
No, I don't have to reply because I'm going to repeat what I'm just saying. We are the biggest city in the North East, so our Chief Executive is paid more than any other city. It's as simple as that. It's commensurate with what comes from central government and what is deemed as appropriate. Now, that is the position and whether we pass it, whether the Conservatives sensibly pass it, whether you want him to do it or not is the material. It's just embarrassing and annoying, councillor Hudson, that at the end of the day, what was a very good process, which was cross-party and agreed upon, and here you are trying to make a ridiculous political point again about something that is just what you have to pay to get the best people, I'm afraid. And I am disappointed with your comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And you, Peter, you have said the report to the Human Resources Committee. And I call on the leader to the council to move the area arrangements and the report.
Madam Mayor, councillor Kelly, who should be usual support.
After Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The report for me?
Definitely, our group's had to set the report.
For us, I think we have.
Andrew, would you like to speak to the report?
I'm sorry, Kelly.
After Kelly, sorry.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I have to say before I start with this report that this is not my work, this is the work of all the councillors, of councillor Susan Watson, and this is a long report which has come back from the director on this one. The report demonstrates how the area management process is intended to support the local councillors in their ward, community leaders, and how area committees continue to meet the challenges and take forward opportunities to meet the needs of local people and develop a more resilient, stronger community. Madam Mayor, the report illustrates the scope that I thought you had taken by then by and through the five area committees and their support place and people boards. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen seems to be the challenge as the government causes a recent impact on services. It responds to five area committees and their supporting people and person boards by a very busy book productive year, where we have to ensure that local residents continue to receive high-quality services and see improved outcomes in their communities. Through the area management programme, we have worked closely with all the council services to ensure that the reduced budgets are being used to the best effect in the local areas. And as community leaders at the heart of our local areas, we have used our local intelligence and knowledge from our residents to share the service in the square. While the community sector's network has been an integral and supportive part of the area committees to achieve what they have done during twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and is our working relationship with these organisations and local residents and partners that have ensured that our local priorities are based on local communities, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, area committees have continued to use the overall area budgets from the wide range of community projects as detailed within the report. And, Madam Mayor, just to highlight, in the past year, two hundred and fifty-five local BCS organisations and internal partners have been awarded weekly chest brands worth a total of two hundred and thirty-one thousand and sixty-two pounds. Area committees have also awarded one player one million, six hundred and five thousand dollars of a strategic initiative for their budgets to live in local areas. Madam Mayor, I have heard comments for area committees and some of the universal areas for the area committees doing that, a central piece of what we do. And I have to say the support is good from my predecessor, former councillor of the council, councillor Susan Watson, has been exemplary. And I do that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I was first glad to thank Charlotte and all, let's say, my staff as worked with the area committees over the year, if I'm not wrong, as usual. Madam Mayor, it is important to look at our past year, not just in terms of your grants that the area committee have awarded, but also in the positive outcomes from the chief of our communities and the residents meeting a relative risk to local lives and communities. This report gives a overview of some of the activities and achievements that have taken place over the last year and highlights the key work that our area arrangements care in the council's community leadership approach. On reflection, it was really quite amazing what has been achieved in such a short time. And I would be a tear in time to rate and tell you the work of the area committees during the past year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Morgan. Thank you very much, Peter. Any other members with a vote, please raise your hand. As for Dixon?
Just a very brief, it's actually a comment, Madam Mayor, to just relate to the East Area Committee, of which I'm a member and is chaired by councillor Ball. This, in my opinion, is an excellent area committee, a lot of hard work. And the excellent bit about this committee is that all three partners actually put together the work for the people of Sunderland. And that, in my opinion, is a good plus to it. And a lot of excellent projects have been passed through in the last year. But the reason I'm getting up is to really be into it, the councillor, the officer, and that is to thank the hard-working staff, got excellent stuff, the help on the East Area Committee. I'm sure they'll send another area committees and I'd just like to commend the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Councillor Hudson?
Thank you, Madam. And Madam, it would be interesting not to actually echo people around tonight, Dixon, thanking the officers who've helped the London Parliament members on the area committees in the past year and often, you know, going beyond the call of duty. Certainly, I'd like to thank Erica Shroom for her help. I would say in regard to the point of focus, I do have a slight concern about the way it's presented. I do feel that it does read a bit of a propaganda piece. I would like to see on these area reports a bit more balance. I do recognise that there's a role for councillors to celebrate the achievements of the area committees, but, you know, from the experience of being in the committee, we know that we get through a lot of facts and figures about problems facing our area and I think we should be open about those and frank about them in a report like this. Finally, Madam, I'd like to raise the issue that, clearly, at the budget meeting, I think both the opposition groups did suggest that the area arrangements are somewhere where the council may, we should consider streamlining. As we are a new leadership then, and indeed as John Clay has said, this is one of the budgets which is a source of pressure, perhaps it would be sensible to consider rethinking how this works. It is very demanding on staff and resource time in terms of numbers of meetings, the amount of paid work. I certainly think the number of area committees could be reduced. The need for places and people boards to be separated could be rationalised, just to actually reduce the pressure on staff and members whilst still getting something of the same effect. And I'd like to hear the new leadership perhaps to look at this as an area to be streamlined. Thank you.
Thank you, my honourable councillor Hudson. Councillor Kelly?
Madam Mayor, I have to echo what councillor said earlier. It's a shame that only have good news story and positiveness to affect our communities. Liberal Democrats have to go a point scoring. I was a conservative councillor that had an on-travel the day, opened them and just sort of saying, you know, in terms of policies, not just constantly jive all the time. Madam Mayor, I've got to say that the five area chairs are all there because we are our largest parliament in the city. They have done tremendous work. Councillor Gough, when she was in force, and councillor Susan Watson have worked tirelessly. The officers have worked tirelessly to ensure that this works. We don't have three area committees a year, three area committees a year. You must reduce it further. To be honest, councillor, I'm going to give you something there. I want to see more of it, I want to see more into area arrangements. I want area arrangements, the very part of what we do as a council. And we should be engaging with every opportunity and listening to what the public wants, not what the Liberal Democrats want, what the public wants. And, Madam Mayor, it is my intention that I will look at this through the leadership team, but what I will do is I will look to see how I can strengthen the excellent work that has been done by colleagues in the past and by officers to ensure that our area arrangements become stronger and basically drive forward. If I could persuade anybody who follows anybody, I would say if you tried to, I would say I would have the budgets as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, it's very interesting, councillor Kelly. So how can we see a multi-report? And now, how follow-up of councillor Diana Snowman's report? That's the plan of the report. The second speaker. Senator, your last second report is reserved by this. Thank you very much, Peter. Councillor Snowman would like to speak to the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It gives a great pleasure to present the annual scrutiny report for twenty seventeen, eighteen. The annual report provides a summary of the work of each of the committees over the last year. This includes the overarching coordinating committee and the three thematic scrutiny committees covering health and wellbeing, children's services and economic prosperity. I think that the report highlights just what a challenging year this has been for scrutiny and indeed the council as a whole. Local authorities across the country can continue to operate within an environment of austerity and financial constraints while demand on our services continue to grow. As a result, the council and indeed our partner organisations across the city are pressed to deliver ever greater financial savings and deficiencies. Madam Mayor, this report highlights a wide range of issues looked at by scrutiny over this year. It includes overseeing and monitoring the performance on together for children, providing a challenge and a voice for service users during the consultation exercise for the NHS Sustainability and Transformation Plans, and monitoring the progress of economic regeneration in our city, including the work of Sidley and the Northern Spider Bridge and the International Advanced Manufacturing Park. All in all, this has been another busy year and the annual report is testament to this. And I'm sure the coming year will be just as busy. In conclusion, I'd like to thank everybody who has contributed to the work of scrutiny over the last twelve months, councillors and officers alike. Madam Mayor, I'd like to add a special thanks to ex-councillor Norma Wright. As we look forward to another productive year, I'm sure she will be there always to remind us that after all, we don't know what we don't know and must remember that scrutiny is member-led. Madam Mayor, I present the report.
Report from councillor, does any other member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Oliver? Councillor Francis? Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And can I first of all say thank you to the officers who have prepared the report and helped on the committees throughout the year, Charlotte, a few of the passengers, thanks to everyone else. Can I also pay tribute to the good work of the three conservative councillors, councillor Francis on the children's committee, councillor Dixon on the economic committee, and councillor Lethbetter on the health and wellbeing committee? Although I'm not a scrutiny myself, I am an avid reader of the minutes of the committee meetings and I echo the comments by councillor Snow, that some very important issues in the city are discussed in great detail, with great length on these committees. It's very interesting to see what's in there and to see what progress is being made. Madam Mayor, if I could just make one point and ask the Leader of the Council a question. We do, of course, have a new leadership of the council, so it's there to ask what the new leadership policy on everything is really. Whilst I accept that Labour councillors can be good at scrutiny and having read the minutes, I can certainly attest to the fact that on many occasions they're very, very much on, but we do feel, Madam Mayor, that scrutiny really should be a role where the opposition should lead. Currently, there are only five opposition councillors who are on scrutiny. And of course, one of the reasons is that the ratio for calculating cases on scrutiny committees includes the members of the council who are in the executive. We rather feel that if you're in the cabinet, you should not be included in the ratios for working out how many seats there are for each party. And that would make a small difference and we feel that that would inject a bit more fairness into the system. So we ask if the council can give a response to that point. Thank you.
Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam. I begin by saying my own thanks to the officers. They're excellent and they get their answers and they all come very well in terms of these things. Of course, the report, councillor Oliver, said about the composition of scrutiny committees. But I would like to thank Norma Wright, the Diana Snowman, councillor Ollie, and my own chair in children, Matt Smith. There are times when I feel a little bit lonely, a little bit children, a little bit of punch, and I use that phrase on occasions, but these committees are always under to me in the most political way. Thank you very much.
Andrew, would you wish to speak to councillor Oliver, if he can be, to this council? Or would you please turn around?
Madam Mayor, this is scrutiny matter, the point that councillor Oliver, on a late basis, he can quite happily come into that seat at any time with a discussion of the council. I mean, this council's report.
With respect, Madam Mayor, I have asked, as I have the right, the question to the council chairman, so the question I said.
Would you like to have a seat? Well, actually, it's a question to Chair, Chair, Chair. Councillor Stone?
Councillor Stone's report.
Madam Mayor, as the question has been asked, it's something I'm sure we can have a meeting after this meeting and we can just discuss what the balances are and where we stand legally with everything in the report.
I think that would be a nice, a nice sensible option. Councillor, can I ask you if you wish to speak? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you like to speak on the matter? Councillor Stone, do you wish to emphasise your right to reply?
Nothing further to say, Madam Mayor. The report is consented.
Thank you very much. How can we see the notes to the report?
Great.
We now move to the written question by the councillor. Now, please, there is a question by Member of the Council. Question one, councillor Paul Stafford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank me, all councillors of the big shop have seen to the fire defending on Smiles View Side. For the rate of the council, we did cancel with the full plats in relation to the moving agency response to fire.
Okay, Madam Mayor. And as I stated earlier, the question of the member of the public, if you're involved. The staff at this council that spotted the fire, the fire was spotted at around 6pm on the morning of the night. Site contained around 30,000 tons of waste, which had been found when this company went into the project. The fire rescue service made a response and managed to stop the risk spreading. The waste stopped within two days, two hours by one side. Will the agency response take comprehensive offices from the fire rescue service, the police, the environmental agency, public health department, and council, the funding and the major incident off? And if we can clearly take collective action to place the agencies to tackle the situation, the agencies work together to first ensure the fire was contained, that the air quality monitoring was put in place with regular checks and made by residents and businesses to help minimise potential public health impacts and architectural pollution to do the way it was wanted. There was estimated that the fire contained several units left to burn at the law. And the team unanimously agreed to aggressively intervene to put the fire out as quickly and as safely as possible. This was a complicated and dangerous job, which required many thousands of tonnes of burnt and burning waste to be removed from the main building, quenched and cooled after being stored elsewhere on site. This took maybe two weeks, but the fire finally blew out on Tuesday the 5th of June. Sites were cured and the major incidents stood down for the following week. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Dan. Question two, councillor Peter Water.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Does the council have any plans to introduce a 20 mile an hour speed limit on roads and residential areas not adjacent to schools?
Okay, Madam Mayor. On the 2nd of June 2010, government agreed policy for the introduction of 20 mile an hour zones in residential areas. The rolling programme talked in 15 areas across the city to identify the pilot project. Today, six schemes have been completed in the following locations. So, 90, 10, 4, 8, 10, and 10. In the 2018 labour programme, schemes being developed for areas in Ternan Park and Red House. It is anticipated that the remaining schemes of Concord, Gilly, Seaford, Dink, Pennywell, Hillview, Oxchalls and the whole farm will be developed over the next two to three years, structured on the mission that the schemes identified for delivery in the previous year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very good, councillor Dan. Question three, councillor Hassan Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was keeping there, this is quite, the question was quite detailed. I have received dozens of complaints from residents across the world coming forward about waiting times to bring the council, trying to access basic services. Many residents become so frustrated that simply given a waiting and terminated the call. Having looked at the council's own service level reports, it's clear the council has failed to meet its own target for answering calls within 60 seconds for a large part this year. Under 50 and 83 days between January and April, residents calling the city neighbourhood team had to wait longer than 60 seconds as the council misses target. Well, shockingly, in May, the council misses target every single day, with the report confirming that the service level was only with one set of calls being answered on time on the 8th, 9th, 11th and 23rd of May. The story gets worse again for city neighbourhood team. The staff did have a lot of difficulty in that, but when we look at the abandoned toll rates, 1,961 calls were abandoned by residents, some of them between January and April. Disturbing the situation then gets worse again in May, where it almost reaches a crisis point of 970 calls being abandoned in that one month alone, as residents have given up waiting for the calls to be answered. It is appalling that on two separate occasions, over 100 residents were forced to hang up the call, as well as answered. This being on 3rd of April, 112 residents terminated their call, not the April 16th, 160 former residents gave up. On 22 occasions so far this year, 50 residents have terminated their call due to lack of response. I'd like to ask, what is the council doing to address this issue and ensure its calls from residents are answered on time? Does the new leadership this is an acceptable level service for our residents and would they apologise for the shocking loss of service levels in May?
Madam Mayor, I have to say, that wasn't a question, that was a political speech based around the Liberal Democrats, cheap tactics which they continue to employ and go all the way through this process. Madam Mayor, I'm very proud of our staff, because satisfaction is always been very important. And I'm disappointed to learn that some residents have had to wait longer than they expected times to have their calls answered. On the city neighbourhood lines, which were currently dealing with environmental inquiries. This is due to overall reducing staff levels, global severity is starting it. And we've had to lose the number of staff over the years, Madam Mayor. We are in the process of trying to recruit crassists, but that isn't easy because the crass's premium can't be used to pay wages. So premiums at Conservative go in front of this, it's not true, there was to pay wages with it, which allows us to train people with it. And we've been through a number of issues in the new technology. However, Madam Mayor, it's a real fact that we're coming. First of January to 28, the 31st of May 2018, 52,631 calls were offered on the city and neighbourhood lines, and 91% of those calls were answered. Within the last month, two additional staff have been recruited. And from the 1st of June 2018 to the 7th of June 2018, 527 calls were offered, and 97% of these calls were answered. Within the service level of 70%, of the calls answered within 60 seconds, being recruited. From the 1st of January 2018 to the 31st of May 2018, we have received a grand total of two complaints about waiting times in the city council and city neighbourhood lines. These complaints were responded to quickly and apologies offered. And we need to be realistic with what we're trying to do, we've stopped fighting with the size of it, and work with us as soon as possible. And yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I would like to say, this is a political point, this is genuine, and I'm expressing on behalf of my residents. How deep has been many claims in the past about improving levels, producing attractive recruits in the city? To work the socks off. The subject I do want to ask is that it was clear in the documents I've read that there was a problem back in April, 635 calls abandoned the last two weeks. The response perhaps that zooming identified a near as a problem, and agency staff would be brought in to cover.
Question, question, question.
So the question is, when I've been told by officers that to hold up with the HR, getting these agency staff in this one Saturday June, I'd like to ask what would lock up this and help that be bypassed? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, you had another political statement, there was still a question.
That would be the end of our stage.
Yeah, I take it that the question was, there was a bug with the HR, and what are we going to do to rectify it? Thank you, just rectify it, right, I took it in the wrong. Madam Mayor, and if there's anything else, you know, raising your staff of less than we used to have, we've got less people doing more work and trying to get the jobs done. We work constantly, Madam Mayor, to try and resolve issues, particularly within recruiting. And I am very happy with the staff that we have doing the job, because there are first-class bunch of staff who tirelessly work. And I would suggest councillor as well, buzz up there one day and listen to some of the calls. Listen to some of the stuff our staff have to put up with. And to be honest, I'm probably going to be a major six, probably, I mean, I'm a fantastic call.
The calls being cleared?
You finished.
Calls terminated.
Next question, question four, councillor John Dutton. Thank you, Madam Mayor, my question's crucial. Could we help the Hello Day council on what they say is the impact on Sunderland the government's recent announcements in relation to adult social care? Thank you, Madam Mayor. That will be answered by councillor Dr Water.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Fletcher for asking the question, gives us a free opportunity to update council on the position which we have on social care green paper. We agree with the position of the green paper, which has been referred to the sort of 2018. The government must by this time announce and implement a credible solution to address the long-term funding for adult social care before the end of 2018. We cannot underestimate the challenges that face health and social care services, particularly the understanding of adult social care its direct effect and contribution to the crisis in the NHS over winter. There have been a recent announcement that additional money will be put into the NHS. However, this could be a false economy if it fails to address the funding issues which exist in adult social care. While the announcement of the green paper this summer shows the government recognises the need for long-term reform, we need to ensure that we continue to meet the needs of adults who are older and those who have a disability in Sunderland. While we acknowledge the pressure on budgets and increasing change in demographics, we have plans in place to ensure that those who are most in need will be kept safe and have their needs met. We will, through the green paper, have the opportunity to express our desire for a long-term sustainable future for social care in Sunderland. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Does the portfolio of the reprieve that went across the board policy of free parking on Sunday's bank holidays at after 6pm in council and car parks go on and off street, would it carry more visitors to go to the city centre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I consider there is enough protest and free parking in the 6th and 4th of August, my apologies, and after 6, councillor Water. But I do intend to review this on an annual basis. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Next question, councillor James Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to answer the question on behalf of the board of officers. I'd like to withdraw the question about the board what has done to people who are struggling. Possibly a great time to get to the area, but I'd like to ask the leader of the council. I'd talk to the councillor about the wall in the new London Spider Bridge. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fire and siege is at the table, there are fears taken on site and on the long term. This is primarily focused on completing the works of 105 million high item. 105 million, George, we've just won six awards, I'll just mention that again. And as all weather dependencies due to the working platforms are being used by the contractors, they're sensitive to meetings, the forceful conditions still to be protected by the field. The work is expected to be completed internally, although the exact date is not known due to the weather related issues of the pink highlight. And we in this energy can't control many things that happen in the city, sadly we can't control the weather. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Stone, question seven, sorry, councillor, do you want anything? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could the cabinet member of the council of the latest position in relation to various city centre regeneration schemes? Councillor Miller, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As members will be aware, the council is in the process of delivering a hugely exciting city centre regeneration programme. Working with partners, a number of projects are currently being developed and delivered in the city centre. These projects are all targeted to create new employment opportunities, improve the city centre experience, and provide infrastructure improvements to support new investment, as well as supporting agency businesses. For example, the Volks development will bring new job opportunities. Further infrastructure works in the minister's court area will support wider developments, such as the new auditorium being delivered by the Mac Trust, as well as the Empire Theatre. And the planned hotel in Kew Square will bring a new four-star hotel to a part of the city. The Volks site, Sydrian is currently finalising the procurement of a new main contractor, which will allow books to recommence in the coming weeks. Meanwhile, the council and Sydrian continue to work on the marketing of the building via the appointed letting agents and future development phases. Our investment corridor, the public rail's work on High Street West have been completed. The next phase will see the demolition of the old buildings for the former police station to allow a new access road to be constructed, which will provide improved view from the minister's area directly onto St Mary's Boulevard, and will enable the pedestrianisation of the road between the Dunk Cow pub and the Empire Theatre on Garden Place. Further public level improvements will also be undertaken to High Street West between the Peacock pub and St Michael's Way, and the auditorium project adjacent to the fire station is scheduled to start in early 2019. The council is finalising the detailed terms with the prospective purchaser to redevelop the building for a new creative business space in what is not, what was the former Delbridge Police Station. Sunderland Station, although the council has committed capital funds to the Sunderland Station project along with Nexus, unfortunately, Network Rail withdrew funds from the project, leaving a funding gap. Despite this setback, the council remains committed to this project and in partnership with Nexus, continue to work up video proposals for the station whilst at the same time seeking additional public sector funds to deliver this project. As it stands, a deliverable detailed design will be completed later this year and subject to securing additional funds, a development can start in 2019, 2020. Sunnyside, the council in partnership with Homes England have continued to make acquisitions in the Nile Street and Villiers Street area in order to assemble a comprehensive site that can be redeveloped for housing-led development. Project architects have recently been commissioned to prepare a detailed master plan scheme for this part of Sunnyside, which will set out how development can come forward in a series of phases. Stadium Village, following a number of acquisitions made by the council on Homes England, the area adjacent to St Peter's Metro Station has recently been cleared to create a development site. Sales particulars for the site have now been prepared, and the site will be advertised for sale in the coming week for housing development. Both the Kew Square Hotel project and the former Currie site development proposals are subject to separate questions, and so updates on these will be provided later on in the proceedings. And that, Madam Mayor, is just the start of what we're trying to do for the city, to develop it, to build it for the future, and to make sure that our grandchildren have somewhere to work, rest and play, that they can be duly proud of their grandparents having delivered it for them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What plans are there to replace trees in St Mary's Boulevard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pay the vote to the yet by no question. At Councillor, there are no plans to replace any trees on St Mary's Boulevard. The condition and the health of the trees on St Mary's Boulevard continues to be monitored and will ensure trees successfully themselves in thrive in the long term.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask, now, so much has passed since the enactment of 1.5 billion being drawn to the city's street cleaning budgets. Can Lee clarify exactly how and where this money will be spent in terms of on the ground set?
Councillor Wilson. And you, Madam Mayor. Do now streets really clean, is priority for the public and for this year of council test? And in addition to the feedback from the public, we have invested an additional 4.5 billion over the next three years to achieve this. The vast majority of the 4.5 billion additional funding for this financial year has been allocated to employment of nearly 100 additional employees, including 21 apprenticeships. Remaining from these revenues purchase additional equipment and the vehicle required for this person. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Councilor Jackson, please.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Thank you actually, to the board for clarifying, we are expecting the remaining employees, that's great. I just wonder if she should clarify, I was concerned by her comments at the recent Barnes Polly and Northfield residents association, that some of this would include managers and back office staff, because that seemed to contradict the comments at the previous portfolio holder. So if I could just get clarification on that, thank you.
Thank you Madam Mayor, there are no managers, there is back office support, back office staff, there would be back office of no managers on stage. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Question, Councilor Julia.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Could the cabinet member update the council on how residents can have their say on the latest version of the core strategy and development plan?
Thank you Madam Mayor, the council has a question. Consultation of the core strategy and development plan will pass commence on the 15th of June for a period of six weeks, which will end on the 27th of July. The consultation is slightly different to the previous round of consultation as its purposes to seek views on whether the plan and associated documents are served and legally compliant. A guidance note to enter the consultation can be found on the council website. The bring some easiest way for people to respond is online via the council's website. However, the council will host ten events during the consultation period, two million chariots, where officers will be able to assist residents complete the forms. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Councilor, Hardison.
Thank you. With your indulgence, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to welcome Councilor Boardhouse to the housing portfolio and perhaps remind you that two of his predecessors who have shadowed both became leaders of councils. While appreciating the Gen Two as a second body to the council, nevertheless it is by far the largest provider of social housing in the city. And also unfortunately during last year, it was rated non compliant to the decent home standard. Despite there being councillors from the majority party on the Gen Two board, there seem to be unexpected news to the council. Is the new portfolio holder satisfied with the ongoing working relationship with Gen Two so that issues like this can be discussed before they happen? Thank you Madam Mayor.
Councilor Wilson.
Thank you Madam Mayor. In relation to the first year that council thinks, I have no illusion to become the, uh, the, uh... In response to the question, thank you very much for the final answer. The council values the role that Gen Two claims the city has the largest provider of social housing. Relations with Gen Two continue to improve and regular meetings take place at a senior level to discuss normal business and future development plans for all organisations. I am confident that these relationships and meetings allow open and frank discussions on the necessary issues.
Thank you very much. Councilor Brian.
Thank you Madam Mayor. It has recently been announced that the council will be increasing the price of parking in Sunderland. Can the leader tell us what improvements, what are the justifications for this price hike and what improvements can residents expect to see in parking as a result of these increased charges? Thank you Madam Mayor.
Councilor Andrew. Thank you Madam Mayor. What's the text rule, is it just a temporary increase on the first of July? It is worth noting that the Chronicle recently published an article that revealed that Sunderland car parking charges are amongst the cheapest in the country. The increase will lend continued investment improvements to car parking facilities and traffic management included. An upgraded system at St Mary's Park will improve customer service with new airbus and barriers, new pay station, new pay stations and new credit standard card facilities in contact with sales. Introduction of new parking management systems, introduction of new pay split locations, improvements to the exits at St Mary's Park, replacement of some pay split machines, resurfacing and relining some car parks and replacement of parking equipment software. So Madam Mayor, as I've already stated, that was a brilliant article in the Chronicle regarding Sunderland being cheapest in the country. So President O'Brien and his colleague, Chancellor Hodson, spent more time reading the press instead of trying the headline. I'd like to know your opinion.
Oh, Councilor then. I'm thankful, Madam Mayor. Could the cabinet member update the council on what's been a number of house completions has been in the last three financial years and what the only in the city council task base this has resulted in, please? Thank you. Councilor Boardhouse.
Thank you Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilor Beth for providing the answer to this question. Can I also say that this is some really important information that we should share with as many people as we can. The net number of housing completion group of the past three years has been 895 in 2015, 16, 879 in 16, 17 and 891 in 2017. That's an increase of 2,665 over the three year period. Uh, 2,457 excluding student accommodation. With three go on the council task space, the calculation converts the total housing numbers into by daily coverage and additionally takes into account a number of further calculations including discounts, for example, single person discount, council tax support estimate and the overall forecast collection rate. As such, there may not be a direct correlation between new home build and the council tax base supply. However, as a result of these new additional house bills and reflecting the additional tax base calculations previously referred to, the council's budget has benefited by 5.425 million since 2015, 16. Thank you. Fantastic vision.
Councilor Hardison, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Could I look at beginning on the progress of the proposed new hotel in High Street West, close to King Square, a work on which will should be on commence in the first quarter of 2018? Thank you.
Thank you Madam Mayor. And thank you, Councilor Jackson, for the question. Legal contracts have been agreed with the development of the proposed four star 100 treadmill bed hotel, with planning provision and not real unpeers and the private sector funding secured. The project is starting on site is being delayed due to the development review bill costs, which is progressing well with an anticipated start date of later this year. Thank you Madam Mayor. Councilor Boardhouse, you said late this year, I mean, can you be a little more specific or? And you deserve it, don't you? Oh, we've already said the dirty ghost.
Councilor Hodson, it's another question about the smile site in Leftford, I'm recording to ask the question.
Yes, madam, thank you for the time. I do appreciate the portfolio all the asking by her answer to how the problem was dealt with. But the specific aspect of my question we go on and whether they can clarify what action is being taken now, of course, the fifth of June since the decision has been stood down, what action council is taking to deal with the site, agree back to you to avoid burden costs being passed on task. Thank you.
Could you wish to?
Thank you Madam Mayor. I'd like to say the site was founded in 2015, in 30 years in terms of waste intact. This would cost many millions and to treat and remove. The situation of abandoned waste sites is common across the country. I suggest to the Lord of not laying any easy answers in the city centre to not have any direct statutory responsibility to intervene in this present situation. As the company that created the problem no longer exists, the harsh reality is that competition from the public purse in some shape or form would likely be needed to help doing any solutions.
Councilor Andrew.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Could the board confirm when the northern spire will be open to traffic and what economic benefits this will bring to the city?
Councilor Andrew.
Thank you Madam Mayor. I'm going to answer part of the question, but I just want to clarify what's here. The northern spire will be no longer located on the side of the city, improve journey times, reduce congestion, improve that quality and road safety. Sunderland's chief transport corridor, you can get the national advanced manufacturing park, Nissan, the Royal Public Enterprise one and again the city centre and then also on this to the port. I'm just saying also, Madam Mayor, the bridge and associated links are all giving access to primary site development sites. And it's estimated that the damage caused by the bridge is 2.84, providing a return of two pound a year for every pound spent on the project. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Any other questions tonight?
I have to talk, that is not time.
Time, well. Time, well. Um, could I, could I do an extension please?
We have two notes in London tonight, so we are not having an extension to the price.
Madam Mayor, I request the last of those on, on there. What gains?
Yes, we listened to the note. Do you want, do you want an extension to the price?
Point of vote, Madam Mayor? Councilor Hodson is trying to vote on somebody else's behalf, but isn't in the chamber. No, I, I, I think. We hear that. We need to sit and see them. You sit next to me, so I don't, I don't think it matters.
Madam Mayor, there are ten votes in favour and fifty in against, and therefore more potential to be taken. Most of the guys. The report for actual decisions doesn't any member of the whole comment on this vote. How we accept the report of this? And I would want to know some notes. The first one is the subject is the North of the Tyne Devolution. I understand the council people, as also by the council holder, will be moving. Councilor Holder, please do read the others.
Thank you Madam Mayor. The motion reads this council reflects that Sunderland is not part of the North of the Tyne devolution deal and urges council leaders to make more necessary efforts to ensure that the city is not left behind in a future devolution case.
Councilor Wood, do you like to second this motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the point of this motion is that this city may lose out. A devolution deal has been agreed with councils north of the Tyne and Sunderland is in danger not only of being left out, but being put at a disadvantage. The purpose of devolution is surely to allow decisions to be made globally to the benefit of those areas. So surely it follows that what's good for only north of the Tyne councils is going to leave the south of the Tyne councils behind. The range of powers funding and opportunities granted to councils north of the Tyne are extensive. In brief, they include 30 million pounds a year in funding for 30 years, which can then be used to leverage 1.5 billion in investment and also a very broad range of powers over housing, education and transport that have the potential to transform the North East of England. But the problem that we wish to highlight is that every opportunity that the north of the Tyne councils have under this deal could be a potential threat to those councils south of the Tyne, including Sunderland. For example, the mayor of the north of the Tyne will have compulsory purchase powers. Those could of course be used to move the housing market on north of the Tyne, leaving us behind. It may persuade businesses and residents to relocate to other parts of the North East. The full adult education budget will also be devolved. That of course could be a boost to standards and funding in just one part of the region in detriment of others. A long term funding programme has been proposed under the deal for the Tyne and near metro, along with powers over bus and rail franchises. Specifically and most importantly included in that is a potential expansion of the metro system. That of course could mean that we end up being the poor neighbour if that goes ahead and the metro system, which of course is divided between the two parts, um, were to be focused on north of the Tyne rather than south of the Tyne. Enterprise zones are also included in the devolved areas. They can be created from scratch or extended. They of course will be able to directly compete with those enterprise zones that are not in the devolved areas. And we of course have a number in this council, especially now with the port. We could also say that the decision to devolve the UK trade and investment export advice budget would particularly impact on Sunderland with the exports from the port and of course on many points of manufacturing export such as at Nissan and others. Madam Mayor, the mayor of the north of Tyne devolution area is of course in the legislation supposed to be a voice for the entire North East, but relies on getting elected by the votes of only 815 residents north of the Tyne. Now, in the four year term, it's possible that whoever is elected to that post may not be that bothered about the people south of the Tyne who cannot vote for that person. The devolution agreement of course does contain some warnings on what will happen and I must make the point that this council did sign up to that deal before it was pulled. The devolution agreement estimates that at best a quarter of the new jobs created would be south of the Tyne, but it offers absolutely no guarantee or no calculations on that. And most worrying, Madam Mayor, it specifically proposes a number of projects that it favours should get going under the deal, but of course they are all north of the Tyne. They are, for example, to reopen the Newcastle to Ashington railway to passenger services, which could be a real boost for the Ashington live to Newcastle area. There are no specific proposals of benefit to any council south of the Tyne. Additionally, Madam Mayor, the North East mayor will be a single figure and will of course, by virtue of that position, become the senior political figure in the North East. That person will be the go to person politically and will have a seat at the national table. We have already seen that the metro mayors, um, Ben Housen down in Tisley, Rotherham in Liverpool and Deveron in Manchester, to name but a few, are increasing in influence and publicity as we speak. But the mayor of north of the Tyne will not represent the people south of the Tyne, nor will that person of course be accountable to residents of the city because we will have no direct vote and no indirect vote either and of course no place on what will become the north of the Tyne combined authority. We could lose out, Madam Mayor, also because not only will devolution happen north of the Tyne, it will also happen south of the Weir in the form which has already happened in the Tisley, which of course is forging ahead with many common and competing interests north of the Tyne, such as the establishment of a free port, a T sport, which could threaten the port of Sunderland. We are, Madam Mayor, facing the prospect of a donor devolution with Sunderland being the hole in the middle. One example of this could be what will happen with regards to Newcastle and Durham Ties Valley Airport and the threat to air passenger duty, which has been devolved, of course, in Scotland. Will councils actually have a say in what north of the Tyne and south of the Weir do in terms of protecting those two regional airports? And will the people of Sunderland be expected to partly pay for it? be expected to partly pay for it? This council may also of course lose out in terms of Newcastle, in terms of economic growth. If you accept that Sunderland and Newcastle are the two main drivers of economic growth in the north of the north east region, any deal that is restricted to just Newcastle in the north of the Tyne will of course lead to Newcastle becoming essentially a greater Newcastle deal to the disadvantage of this city. But Madam Mayor, the purpose of the motion is not to spread doom and gloom or to scare anger about it, but all my points have been taken from the legislation. It's more of a call for action. We do of course, as I said, have new leadership. We might expect the councillor Miller might have different views from his predecessor. Devolution of course is a process, not an event. Scotland, Wales, Northern Ireland and the different metro mayors in different regions of England have of course greatly increased their powers under devolution since they were first established. So we should expect therefore that any deal in the north of the Tyne would not be static, that it will develop in the future years and that Sunderland may not have, if I may use here the railway analogy again, may not have gone on at the first stop, but it may be able to get on at the second stop. So Madam Mayor, this motion therefore calls and invites the leader of the council to set out his view on the devolution deal and for him to make clear to the people of Sunderland and to this council what his intentions are to make sure that this city does not lose out and gets all benefits of the devolution policy from this government. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ollister. Are there any events in this motion? Would anyone like to speak on the motion? Councillor Wood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very happy to second this motion, to any proposed by my colleague. I have, in past discussions in the council chamber, indicated my support for the devolution. I am disappointed that the south of Tyne authorities, Sunderland included, did not support the deal, which could have made available extra billion pounds or so in the regional economy, not even allowing for the multi power effects of that. Whatever the reservations of the south of Tyne authorities, the north of Tyne authorities, as we be reminded, are going ahead, too late to control one with conservative leadership. And they seem to have the vision, Madam Mayor, that's lacking south of the Tyne and in my view deserves success. We can merely watch from the side. Sunderland and the south of Tyne authorities are at a competitive disadvantage at a point that council owners have been making with the north of Tyne, who will have increased resources, we're talking about several hundred million pounds total. There is strong business support within the region, Madam Mayor, not small, but the south of Weir, more devolution. And if it's going to be good for business, it seems to me to be good for the north east economy, for wealth and jobs and the rest. Now, one sticking point on the part of the south of Tyne authorities seem to be the requirement to have a directly elected mayor. Now, in my view, it's a welcome requirement, frankly, that the person in charge will be directly elected. There will be democratic accountability, I think, in that. It ensures clear leadership and responsibility and it means there's one person to whom government and indeed others outside the region or even within the region can go to do business. But Labour's local council leaders south of the Tyne don't seem to want to share their power with another even for the benefit of the region. Yet elected mayors seem to work elsewhere. And there was an interesting article, Madam Mayor, which I'm sure all members of the council of the red in the current issue first on the Local Government Association starts on page 16 and is headed devolution revolutionaryist, rather hoping again that one of the chairs of the division could produce one or two more devolution revolutionaries in the north east. But the article begins by making some general points. For example, England is one of the most centralised government systems of the world. So devolution, the transfer of power and funding from national level government is important because it ensures that citizens are made closer to the local people, communities and businesses they affect. It should give greater freedoms and flexibility at the local level and the councils will work more effectively to improve public services for their area. Then it quotes the elected, the directly elected mayors, Madam Mayor, a good proportion of course of whom are Labour. But let me start with Tim Bell, the Conservative mayor for Western England, who says, "We're already making a difference, investing in those things that would improve all our lives, better transport, better jobs, more homes. We're supporting businesses to grow and boosting residents' skills and opportunities. Devolution has given us the opportunity to do things differently. Much has been achieved, but there's so much more we can do." So there's somebody in the western England, bless supported, Madam Mayor. Andy Burnham in Greater Manchester, "Over the last 12 months, devolution has started to make a real difference to the lives of everyone across Greater Manchester." He talks of real progress in tackling homelessness and ending rough sleeping, for example. Ben Houshman, the Conservative mayor of Tees Valley, "No one knows the reach of better than those that live here. That's why over the past year for local decisions, the local decisions are making, we're rapidly gathering momentum." And talks about millions of pounds being invested in various projects, supporting creation of example of 4,000 jobs. Steve Rotherham, the Labour mayor of Liverpool, "Devolution means the decision on things that affect us are taken here around the Westminster. We're working to deliver a 21st century transport system, a clearer environment, an education and skill system that raises aspirations and lets our young people thrive and economic growth benefits everyone." Talks of a different investment programme worth more than a billion pounds, becoming Britain's energy coast for renewables and the most digitally connected region in the world. I should as mayor say, because I believe devolution is a game changer, and one year on, I'm more convinced than ever that we're making real progress towards a positive. And then Andy Street, the Conservative mayor of the West Midlands, talks about the era which the westerns have regained its swagger, restored pride in the revolution, sometimes under the poor relative. They secure the Commonwealth Games for Birmingham and helps the city of culture and recovery, showing clearly that not only does this region know how to win once again, but it understands the value of working as a team. All the directly elected mayors, Madam Mayor, different parties, different parties have come from highly supportive of devolution and the opportunities it presents for the people in their regions. I do think, Madam Mayor, it's time to give devolution a chance to see what we can do to improve and promote our region. I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you very much indeed, Councillor Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I think it's worthwhile just trying to backtrack a little bit to the time when the net devolution deal was on the table. And I think everyone will be aware that certainly the council, the council are in favour of devolution. The devolution deal has to be the right devolution deal. The one that was on the table at the time, that wasn't consented to by the full set of time, probably wasn't the right devolution deal for us at the time. As a seven, indeed want to start renegotiation with the government to negotiate a deal that was right for the seven. But Sajid Javid, who was the then community secretary, took the deal off the table. So the reason why a seven devolution deal couldn't progress at the time was that the government halted the negotiations. Then the three of the time went away and negotiated a side deal with the government, which is bouncing the situation where we are now. I would like to correct a few of the inaccuracies in councillor Oliver's speech in the movement motion. The funds secured from the DFT to renew the paper costs has no bearing whatsoever on the north of Tyne devolution deal. It's a completely separate deal, so that has no relation to that. And also the north of Tyne devolution deal has no powers whatsoever over transport. Transport in the region will be overseen and governed by a joint executive committee, which will have representatives from all seven of the authorities. So the north of Tyne mayor, although you will be or she will be a member of that committee, she has no direct or they have no direct power over transport in the region. Again, I think councillor Oliver referred to 30 million for 30 years. I've always been sceptical of these multi year deals because as you all know, one parliament cannot buy another parliament in terms of funding and also my understanding is that the funding is 20 million for over 30 years, so it's actually a reduction in that. Councillor Oliver also mentions in terms of compressing market and the governance of Newcastle back home. It's my understanding that the earlier stage of the region, which currently operates, the airport will remain in the state and again have no bearing whatsoever on the north of Tyne devolution deal. And it's also, I'm sure Ben Houshman, the Conservative mayor of Tees Valley, would take exception to the legal concept of party in Sunderland, seeing that the government of north of Tyne mayor elected will then be the voice of the north east and mayor should be a secondary to the north of Tyne mayor. I'm sure we'll have a... But also I think the both parties mentioned, Madam Mayor, that there's an interesting development happening north of the border. The borders region have negotiated a separate devolution deal with the government, which also includes, Northumberland can be cancelled. And the fact that Northumberland have been able to effectively participate in two devolution deals is the fact that the borders agreement does not require a directly elected mayor. So as a matter of itself, the time, we are more than happy to negotiate. In fact, we are in the early stages of putting proposals together for us to go to London and negotiate a devolution deal. But unfortunately, I'm unable to support this motion because of the simple fact of what I said before, but the fact that Sunderland is not part of the north of Tyne, so it could not be part of the north of Tyne devolution deal. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Wood. Councillor Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's clear that we can't geographically support the motion. So I oppose it on that point and expect colleagues to vote it accordingly because it's nonsense. What I've heard is the usual talking this area down in England and I am getting hardly settled. I inherited a situation where, or could have been a 12, but a decision was made by Tees Valley to become a five, so we were a seven. And then, because the deal wasn't right and I believe the leaders and the leadership of the south of Tyne local authorities at that stage were correct and not wanting to take that deal and at that point the government minister threw his toys out of the pram and snored off by taking the deal off the table. That's what happens sometimes in negotiations and conversations with government and we would always have gone back and talked to them again and looked at how we get a deal on the table. Now, absolutely no problem with north of Tyne mayor or command authority doing what they think is right and I wish them well. If that's what they want to do and the government's going to support it, fair play to them. I think it's not a good deal, but they think it is and it's their decision at the end of the day. Now, what the four local authorities south of Tyne have to do is come together now, realise our strengths because we are the heart and lungs of the north east. South Tyne side, Gateshead, Sunderland, Durham, up there, all the industry is, it's clear all the 21st century industries, it's clear all the new enterprises are coming and we have a massive economic case to make to government about how we would like a devolution deal, councillor Wood, and I think everybody in this chamber would like that, but we don't need an elected mayor and they're no longer being given out by the government anyway. So we hopefully can get out of government a deal that will give us money and more than 20 million pounds a year for 30 years. It's much more relevant to our strategic industry needs, which is Mississauga, Hitachi, Nissan, I am, the voluntary part enterprise zone for Gateshead and everything that goes with that. But I've been here for a month, so I've not quite got there yet, councillor Oliver. You'll have to give me a couple more days than that. I have met with all the council leaders, all seven of the local authorities in north of Tees Valley. I am going to eat with Tees Valley and the mayor there as well because it's absolutely vital that whilst we may be working in separate areas now as a five, a four and a three, that we keep the idea that the north east has to be in the round. The only way we can compete with the Greater Manchesters and the Liverpools of this world is if we manage politically to get our populations to come together on key strategic positions. And we aren't there yet, we're nowhere near it at the moment because we've split into three groups. We're still going to wait and see if the north of Tyne mayor or command authority actually happens because it's not happened yet and it has to get from government and the government don't have time because Parliament breaks up on the 18th of July. So the north of Tyne deal may take slightly longer to be in place than people think that it will take because Brexit, as we all know, is messing up the government timetable for a whole half of things and I expect it will mess up the timetable for the north of Tyne whilst we're at it. The mayor of north of Tyne will not be the key senior political figure for the north east political. There will be the mayor for three regions, three sub-regions within the region, none of which are the biggest city or with the economic muscle that will be required to drive this forward. So I think that Sunderland, Gateshead, Durham and South Tyne side coming together to form their own devolved deal around the four areas, around industry and the economic benefits to the whole country, we will be able to put a very sensible, very comprehensive and very, very good deal that we expect government to support and we just have to get down to doing the work with that. I've got no doubt that the north east will support us on it. I've got local business will support us on it. The north of the east combined authority still needs because it's still legally a seven. But that will carry on with the four and we will use that structure to support what Sunderland needs going forward. But as I've said, I am not about wanting to damage neighbouring local authorities. If Newcastle is successful, we will be successful. If Sunderland is successful, Newcastle will gain success because people move. If the north east had more people come to it and more jobs come to it, we will all benefit because it's like dropping a stone in a pond, the ripples move out from wherever the activity is. We have to be a bit more positive about taking control of our own destiny through our own deal in due course. But I thought I would say that since councillor Oliver was asking about what I thought we should be doing. You're going to have to give me a bit of time because as I've said, there's a lot to pick up on. These things have happened and are historical to where we are at this moment. But the north of Tyne devolution deal is not right for us because we need our own deal for south of the Tyne for a clearly defined area that will benefit the local authorities that sit there. So I oppose the motion of favor on that basis. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Oliver. Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Hudson, I didn't have you on my list. I didn't have you on my list, I'm sorry, I didn't see you have your hand up.
You can't respond. You've got a recorder there, you can't respond. That's the rules.
The mayor's decision might be in the same... Yes, councillor Hudson, I'm sorry, I didn't see you have your hand up, I'm told that you did, so you do come right to someone here.
Rubbish.
I assume that's acceptable, Madam Mayor, sorry. I appreciate your attention, I will be brief. I agree actually with what Graham Miller has said as this...
Hey!
What a beautiful answer. We often appear as a opposition, opposition set. However, I do think that we will be supporting the motion for certain reasons. But I think Graham is right to say that Sunderland hasn't been a lot voted for and that the deal before the council was certainly imperfect, say the least. I was concerned though by Labour saying, you know, that we're in this situation divided into groups, we're split. And I think he was wrong to imply that Newcastle and north of Tyne authority doesn't have their own economic muscle that will actually potentially pose a challenge to Sunderland, to the region. And I think the core question, you know, in this motion is the issue of working together. And that's the real appeal to my mind of the north of Tyne devolution deal, but actually amazingly...
amazingly, there's a cross-part and, you know, devolution deal taking place in the North East, which is quite surprising. It will be quite hard work, I imagine, for those involved. But I feel that, you know, opposition representation does tend to produce better decision-making, a better scrutiny, and I think that does matter for the North of Time. Related to that, you know, one of the questions, for me observing what was happening back with the seven councils working together, I found it a bit alarming that, you know, the regions predominantly Labour-run councils couldn't work together and speak with one voice to government, because I think actually we'd be in a better position if we did have a whole North East deal and one voice taken to government. Now, that would be more powerful. I think the bric-manship that the councils were trying to play with Satyajit was unwise, because at the end of the day, the government have the power, it's the exercise simply to withdraw the offer, even if the previous cabinet were ranked to be critical of the deal. However, we have to condemn that the Sunderland council have always been a party of localism, we are strongly in favour of local accountability, and for that reason, this is an aspirational hypothetical motion, but we have to support it. Because really, going forward, I think the government are going to be watching closely what happens with the North of Time Authority, what happens with the Tees Valley authority, they're the ones that are going to be in the public eye, and we're just going to be, you know, have to do a lot more sharing to get our voice heard, I think that's to our disadvantage. So for that reason, we'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
If you support your colleague in Newcastle. I said, if you support your colleague in Newcastle.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to other councillors for their contribution. As you said, at the end of the day, we are all single, and I'm saying here to you on this one, we do all want the best for the city. However, I would remain indifferent to my concern and really disagree with councillor Miller, that the idea that success in Newcastle will mean commensurate success in Sunderland. I think that would be very unlikely indeed, that any politician elected in Newcastle would give a second thought to somewhere outside their constituency. I do feel, Madam Mayor, that really, this is an example, unfortunately, of Sunderland whilst the North East being given the tools to do the job by the Conservative government, but not, to be honest, having the blissful maturity to grasp them. My understanding, councillor Hudson alluded to this, the fact that north of the time there's an agreement between Conservative and Labour councils, south of the time, they're all Labour, and they couldn't agree themselves. And I do understand that people who were at the Gateshead meeting, where the deal was voted against, some of the Labour councillors were saying, you don't work with Tories. That's what some Labour councillors in Gateshead were saying. And that, Madam Mayor, is an attitude that is extremely short-minded. I do also wonder if some of the reticence around devolution, of course, is the trap in devolution. A Labour MP told me, one of the problems about asking questions about the NHS or the education house comments is, every time the Labour people do that, the Tory stands up and says, ah, in Wales, the Labour Party runs the NHS, in Wales, the Labour Party run education, and then reels off all the statistics to show how very poorly they perform compared to England. And that, of course, would be the trap. You would be responsible for what happens, and you would no longer be able to do what you would love to do every single meeting, and just blame the Tories and blame London for every particular thing. I also think on the issue of a directly elected mayor, the danger is that if we have a directly elected mayor in north of the region, a directly elected mayor in the south of the region, that does give them a hoax look to what's happening in, you know, in Manchester with Andy Byrne, who is the, essentially, the key political figure in that Greater Manchester area of more prominence than the members of Parliament. And that really would be a problem if we did not follow and did not have the same thing. The second problem, of course, would be that the splintering of the devolution, the North East devolution, is meant to work in fairly substantial areas. Scotland, the country, I'm sorry, just paused there, I hope councillor Miller would not be pleased about that one, Scotland, the country, though it fails to get to the World Cup finals. But in large city areas, that are big enough to take the evolution, Manchester's are big enough to have the whole NHS budget devolved to it. But if it was just four councils in the middle of the North East, I do fear we might be smaller than the others and therefore less likely to work well. So in conclusion, Madam Mayor, I appreciate councillor Miller has always been in this post very short amount of time, to hope he and councillor Morgan, obviously, to be fair to them, have taken a serious look at the motion and the issue for this evening. We do appreciate that, we do wish them well, and we will support them on getting the best devolution outcome as possible for this council.
Thank you very much, councillor Oliver. We now go to the votes, the votes on the motion. Councillor Miller, eleven votes in favour, eleven fifty-two against, therefore the motion is defeated. Very good, you're good. We now move on to the second, council motion, on the urgent chat consultation. Councillor Johnson, to read the motion.
The motion reads, access healthcare for the American all in modern society, and this must be guaranteed. This Labour council, therefore, poses the intention for Sunderland's CCG to downgrade the urgent care services at Hooton, Sprang, Bunny Hill, and Washington to extended hours E P provision only. It calls immediately to inform the CCG of its intentions to engage constructive commitment in relation to their consultation with residents regarding local urgent care services. Mandate reviews and offices to review and make every effort to establish a consensus to best represent residents effective by consultation, identifying with immediate and urgent consideration any necessary actions, including consideration of judicial review relating to the urgent care services review. And involve all stakeholders to establish the best possible urgent care outcomes for residents.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Dr Walker, your second motion.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, your second motion, we do the right thing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I will. Madam Mayor, I'd like to start by saying that the privilege you propose is a distribution today, this is the subject, which everyone of us lives in this city and represents the people living in this city. The public may or may not be right with consultations involved by some political commission group, and the options that are actually included on. These proposals are that the urgent care services for walking centres, and they might be led to know that Bunny Hill Primary Care Centre, Hooton Primary Care Centre, and Washington Primary Care Centre, they will be replaced with additional G P hours, and therefore there will be just one urgent care centre for the city, this will be located in Palladium Centre. In recent weeks, I myself speaking to people on this issue, and I would like to person like everyone who has shared their own personal health experience, for their honesty and openness that they've shown. I can summarize every conversation in what sentence, that the CCG are disillusioned if they believe that the people of Sunderland don't value these services. This consultation is proposing that more G P hours will be available to meet the urgent care needs for people that currently visit these centres. The alarming decline in the number of G Ps across the North East is already a matter of particular concern for people across the city, especially given the wider pressures on the NHS services in the region. The new medical school in Sunderland is a fantastic achievement, and we celebrate this hugely. With the current nurturing cultural and educational experiences, I know that these trainees that will come to the city from their national and international homes will want to stay here, because Sunderland is now and over the next ten years will continue to flourish into a wonderful city in which to live and work. Of course, this will help to address the long-term decline in G P numbers, but sadly, the government and CCG need to act now to tackle the recruitment of potential private prices in general practice. There are already not enough numbers of G P in this city, and this number is declining. Some of these extra G P hours might be facilitated by putting a vital lifeline to those vulnerable to frailness of the community in the form of ending or drastically cutting the number of G P home visits. It allows me greatly to think that our safest people outside of hospital, those who are too unwell from intensive G P surgery, might be refused to home visit from their G P. It's clear that this will increase the number of ambulance transfers at admissions hospitals. Urgent care or walking centres were one of the last ever government's flagship NHS policies. About two hundred and thirty of them opened in England in the two thousands. Designed to provide an alternative to A E and G P services, they will occupy patient fans and clearly across Sunderland, this remains the case. Sadly, nationally, ninety-five to be with urgent care centres have closed, ninety-five. This means that forty percent of the original number have closed as the Conservative came to have rewarded for closing soon, depriving patients of easy access to medical help for their minds of minor ailments. The results of these closures across the country has overwhelmingly added pressure on A E units. We must learn from what's happened across the country. Throughout last winter, you couldn't turn on the news, pick up a newspaper without reading about the immense pressures on our hospitals during the winter crisis. Worcester Health Walking Centre closed in twenty fourteen despite the shallow health sector, Andy Byrne, who's we mentioned a lot tonight, pleading with the NHS to retain this valued and important local services, and warning that it would lead to more people seeking help at the Town Royal Hospital. During the recent crisis, that hospital was one of the most worst affected and was forced to divert patients to A E in nearby towns because it could not treat her illness properly. The closure of these services on such a dramatic scale is depressingly short-sighted. This has been happening nationally under radar, and is without doubt driving some of the pressure that is pushing A E units into breaking point, and it's for this reason that Labour councillors are proposing to do this motion today. In recent weeks, since the shock announcement of this consultation, together Labour councillors and key NHS public volunteers who are here tonight have collected over one thousand three hundred physical signatures, that is one thousand three hundred conversations with residents of our city, and every one of these residents are opposed to these urgent care closures. The CCG in their consultation documents say that people of Sunderland find urgent care confusing. Madam Mayor, the people of this Sunderland find this insulting and patronizing, this could not be fun to treat. Those one thousand three hundred people, along with the seven thousand people who have so far signed online petitions, know exactly what they need. Transport is a major concern for Sunderland residents, especially those who have their own vehicle, even though those with cars are also concerned about the parking of Palladium Centre. The transport assessment that the CCG has had prepared on their behalf appears to be significantly over-optimistic in relation to journey times and remaining urgent care centre of Palladium. In particular, it glosses over the fact that parts of Hooton, Ketton, and Washington have very sparse bus services after six p m in the evening, and on Sundays, precisely when the demand for urgent care is at its most acute. Those people most likely to need urgent care services, such as older people, people with disabilities, and families with young children, are those most dependent on public transport, who will find it almost impossible to access these facilities. When they opened originally, the primary care centres were planned and located on the basis of detailed analysis of the local demographics. Essentially, we have them located in those areas of need, to be excessively located, and local residents accordingly. Believe me, I'm all in favour of saving money. I know that the General Commission Group is suffering from gross underfunding from this Tory government, and I know that every penny counts, but I will not sit back and watch services be cut, which is what we're talking about here. There is a myth that people like hospitals. And whilst I don't argue that the terms today need levels are far too high and need to be reduced, one thousand three hundred people in the past few weeks have told us that they don't want to go to A E, they don't want to go to Sunderland Royal Hospital, they are asking us to help them stay away from Palladium. Each time NHS services cut through that funding, it powers pressure on remaining services. While these proposals will take away a vital lifeline for people when they need it most, people have told us they value something in between their G P and the emergency department, which is what they have currently with their urgent care centres. Fifth of July twenty eighteen, seventieth birthday of the NHS, that means seventy years since nine eleven and the birth of the principle of healthcare, really at the point of use as a human right and driven. Access to healthcare is a right of all in modern society, and it must be guaranteed. Madam Mayor, I ask for all members of this chamber to support this distribution. Together, we need to send a clear message to the General Commission Group, NHS England, and indeed Gerry Hunt himself, that the people of Sunderland have a voice, and that on their behalf, we must work together to ensure that our NHS to be vital service, because that's what the residents of this city deserve and need, and remember that we're all in this chamber, and we're the people of this city. Thank you.
I understand that councillor Oliver has an amendment, would you reach down to councillor Walker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The amendment is simply to delete the word Labour from the third line. Consider this, we would like to support the motion, we do feel that there should be a cancel, et cetera, et cetera. So we would ask that members agree to delete the word Labour, I haven't returned my supply. May I speak to the motu, the amendment? Speak on the amendment, Dr Walker.
No one else wishes to speak on the amendment? Councillor Walker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the Labour group, I can accept the amendment. I think we are this C E D side, I will be part and parcel of both the people of Sunderland. I'm happy to accept the motion, and hopefully we can speak as one councillor on behalf of our city and half of our residents, and C E D's by your service. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. So can I confirm that the amendment is agreed?
Agreed.
Does anyone wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to be brief, given that there are so many people wanting to speak and put their positions on behalf of their constituents. But I'd like to start my support of this motion to a certain extent where a councillor checked, I left off, by wishing the mayor of Cheltenham a happy seventieth birthday.
by wishing the area to have a happy 70th birthday. But unfortunately, I hear it's been quite unwell. So at the Labour Conference in September 2017, the issue of prescription called the NHS Green Status Bill, which repealed the Health and Social Care of 2012, puts an end to BFI and returns the NHS to its standing principles. And this will begin the power, this will get the NHS to its standing principles. But the return to the standing principles of the NHS will put an end to the very good name of the model building review and consideration services led by NHS managers and commissioners, of which the consultation on urgent care services in Sunderland is a perfect example. Model building of so-called alternatives, in the case of urgent care services, excludes service users in the development of these models preferring city service delivery driven by technical need. Of course, technical need basically there. But I'll point out that the service user driver is equally as important as the technical driver than any algorithm which drives prolific services forward, which demonstrates an equal reality between the two drivers, with one hand commissioners and the other hand service users. All four of these problems. Of course, be aware that the NHS is a coherent public service. It still needs to survive austerity measures imposed by the Conservative and Coalition Group. Official reports from the One Hundred Forty Five Hospital Trust in England disclose that 44% expect women to find themselves in death centres. Senior NHS advocacy organisations are struggling, as councillor checker pointed out, with pressures on A and E, with hospitals regard to calling their highest level of emergency ambitions. Many organisations are spending heavily on agency staff with a 60% rise in the total bill for local doctors. In the past three years, the doctors being paid up to £1,500 shift. What it needs is more investment, not to force the reconfiguration of services to the benefit of general practitioners. While reconfiguration of services continues, the agenda of marketisation goes on. Almost 70% of contracts of NHS services in England are being awarded to private firms. The review of urgent care services could well open up areas of privatisation and privatisation, of charity picking, tatty medicine, and the home visits of general practitioners. And I think we are seeing privatisation by the back door, as we saw some years ago. Or seeing privatisation by the front door. Well, happy birthday NHS, I'd like to say, he's many of them, but I'm not sure I'd say that at this stage. Madam Mayor, I set an order.
Councillor Aitken?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As so many colleagues obviously see in England, I want to keep this short. I want to start tonight by praising the NHS staff at all the urgent care centres that we were talking about. Their professionalism, their care, their dedication is the reason why our NHS is so great. I'm not even lying with the bash services. I'm here tonight to ask the CCG to think again, to stop the madness of the changes they are proposing and to listen to the public. You and I don't always make the right choices, and on this occasion, I have to say, we're often not. Any change in service must be planned, well thought out, and really only to benefit the people who use them and work in them. This evening, I'm going to give some simple facts about Pallion Urgent Care Centre, which demonstrate why Pallion cannot and must not be the only urgent care centre in our city. Pallion is only easily accessible to those who are able-bodied. And by definition, that's not usually a group who regularly need urgent care. Patients cannot be dropped off at the front door of the centre, as it in fact covers three ground levels. The main level is below the level of car park and also below the level of Hilton Road. And is accessed by a wide sloping patio pavement and also a flight of steps. And the eastern half of the centre sits on stilts with six feet headroom of room. So from ground level, at this point, the entrance is up two flights of steps. And sure colleagues tonight will agree, this is hardly a warm welcome for those who come needing help. Parking at Pallion is nothing short of a nightmare. There were only 35 parking spaces in this small, but not perfectly formed car park. When I accessed the centre, my son was barely ill. I was blocked in the car park by two cars trying to reverse, another tried to park, and another tried to escape the car park without talking to the barrier. As a mum whose child was worsening by the minute, I can only say the sense of panic and frustration this caused was horrifying. The car park boasts only two simple parking ways, two electric vehicle charging points, and one ambulance bay. Not a pickup or drop-off zone in flight, and this colleagues is somehow meant to deal with the demand of all Sunderland patients. Now, for the 36th person to access the urgent care centre by a car, then off-street parking is their only choice. Unless they wish to pay the astronomical charges enforced by the old scene, Park Nine at City Hospital Sunderland. However, off-street parking is easier said than done. In Peat Off Street alone, there is a social club, a community centre, a taxi business, a popular tyre fitting business, and student accommodation. The 36th car will simply have no local parking room. In neighboring streets, there is also the hospital parking management scheme navigated, along with schools, nurseries, and a busy residential area. Where or where I ask the CCG is car 36, 37, 38, meet Ibrox, going to park. Whilst I'm on a subjective transport, this area is not one that is easily accessible for those travelling from other parts of the city by public transport. This is a huge flaw which the CCG have kindly failed to address. All I decline when making these shambolic plans. Now moving inside the centre, there are 15, yes, 15 seats next to the reception desk. The reception desk is open plan, and on occasions when I've attended, this is an extremely busy area with people often choosing to sit on the floor or the stairway. What will happen if this becomes the only centre for the whole of the city? Will people queue outside? Will David Handledon of the CCG rent out deck chairs to patients on the sloping patio? Who knows? Now, the centre is also holding three GP surgeries, serving more than 20,000 patients, mainly from the West End of our city. There are also extra treatment rooms, meeting rooms, and training facilities. To say that Pallion is already our home and current site is a huge understatement. Its current use is actually testament to the brilliant care it provides. However, we are at capacity. Pallion cannot and should not be the only urgent care centre in Sunderland. This is a dangerous, ill-for-our plan, which will deny our residents their basic rights of free healthcare at the point of access. Colleagues, in the 70th year, the NHS faces its biggest challenge, and that challenge is this awful Tory government. This Tory government, who will privatised by the front door, make you and I do their own work. And the Tory government, who would sooner see women offered no protection from whoopsurking, children all hungry, and our NHS failing, all swats dishing out tax breaks to the likes of the despicable Philip Green or buying votes from the DUP. I call on all colleagues to support this motion and fight for our residents to have decent access to healthcare in Sunderland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As councillor Cheffins said, GP-led walking centres were established in England in 2009 to improve access to GPs as well as A and E attendances. We were all very excited in Washington to hear you were going to get a walking centre. I can remember very clearly, I say all, because it was the Conservatives in Washington, taking credit for the opening of the walking centre in one of their newsletters. We laid the basis for more than that, taking advantage of it being one of Labour's national flagship policies following the DART review. I've become quite amused that the walking centre became an appointment-only centre, and now is necessary not to close it from the side of an out-of-hours GP service. The CCG claim that patients are confused. Research does not seem to support this view, though there is research by monitor that there was confusion about commissioning walking centres between NHS England and the CCGs. The current argument from GP-led CCGs is that patients would prefer to see their own GP. Well, yes, they would, but it's extremely torturous to get an appointment. And my recent experiences were reflected by those of the Washington consultation, I can imagine. And that was to be ringing up at 8am and then to be kept hanging on for 20 minutes while the procedures went through all the people who had managed to get in front of me, even though I wrote on the dot at 8am. And after my 20 odd minutes wait, I was told there are no more appointments for that day. And I'd have to ring up the next day, and this is the experience of patients in Washington. Now, I've also been, at no time have I been told about the extended hour service, and I was surprised to hear about it at the consultation event. And so, all you, there were few people who were actually there, but actually heard about it. Now, I want to want to sort of research information. Our researchers have linked the opening of a walking centre to a significant fall in the numbers of daytime attendances, minor ailments at A and E. The first M study of the impact of the new GP-led walking centre on other NHS services found statistically significant 26% reduction in daytime attendances at the Adult Emergency Department after building the centre. This is found in 2011, and reported in News Magazine by Alistair Sterling, and taken from the 7th August in January 2014 in the Journal of Emergency Medicine. There was also a 10% reduction after the walking centre opened in the Children's A and E Department, after a number of seasonal fluctuations. The researchers surveyed over 500 patients visiting the walking centre in Sheffield over a three-week period during September and October 2011, and found 14% said that they were diverted from going to the emergency department during this survey period as a result of the establishment of the walking centre. The researchers said this reduction was not mirrored with changes in nighttime attendances when the walking centre was closed. And as their responses suggested, some people were diverted from going to the emergency department. It is possible that opening of the walking centre causes production. However, a recent review by the Competition Limited monitored that CCGs were closing walking centres after they were paying twice for brand-new care services when patients were registered with those GPs. More recent research finished in 2017 says that the continued closure of walking centres could increase pressure on A and E departments already in the midst of the winter crisis, in turn NHS data's reviewed. This is despite the claims from NHS trust that closing walking centres would have a minimal impact on emergency wards. A Freedom of Information request revealed the results of an investigation by the Pennine Care NHS Foundation Trust to reserve the greater area into a potential fallout of closing the centre in Farring. The closure of just one walking centre could mean a potential 7,406 extra people every year seeking emergency treatment at A and E when it was only necessary in three cases. The trust found that between March 2013 and March 2016, 22% of the almost 99,000 patients who attended the centre in that time would have gone to A and E if the walking centre didn't exist. So even though just 0.4% of the mental problem, that warranted doing so. The trust's own estimate was that by diverting people away from A and E, the walking centre had saved then £938,432 in just one financial year. Asking two walking centres in Farring would have saved £800k, so this makes no sense in British terms either. According to the Campaign Group of 38 degrees, 95 of 238 walking centres in England have shut since 2010, 40% were torn down. It is now unclear how many more centres are currently consultation to be closed. But 39 degrees says that massive 70 units have been shut or downgraded according to the most recent government figures. And the attendance at these centres has been growing. Labour MP James Briggs says the government should call a halt to walking centre closures. I do not think the government's statement that closing walking centres will increase pressure on A and E is based purely on reality of the murdered patients, and I'm implying to agree with it. Turning to the suggestion that there should be one urgent care centre in Pallion is me asking for trouble. It will put more pressure on an area of ordinary service from hospital traffic. And if you are in need of care, what will prevent people from not just going to A and E when they are there anyway? The suggestion of new to Pallion leaders does marginalise the core of public transport as from Washington, for most times out of hours, they would have to go to taxi there in Farring. And one of our least experienced nurses, who was recently on emergency surgery, that she had been advised to attend a walking centre and have her open room treated on Sunday afternoon when the community nurses service is not available. I wonder what the arrangement would be for such a patient when the walking centre in Washington closes? Obviously, advice not to drive, because of the open food, would be also unadvised to pass such a distance. We are told in the consultation that the 111 service is to be improved from October of this year. The whole confession that I discuss is with the news of the evening shutters that we are there. I feel that if we really do intend to reduce the amount, we need to change the operating conditions of pharmacies. On the continent, we have all seen the 24-hour pharmacies and their ability to provide medical support. We do not have the same facility here because they are not commissioned to provide it. In my view, it would be much more cost-effective if it was in view of treatments that pharmacies could provide direct without running from a GP prescription, much better than going to ring 111, and certainly much better than going to try and make a GP appointment. It seems to me that NHS consultations are really window dressing after the decision has been made. I feel that the closure of the service in Washington would reject many of the people I resent, and will have an adverse effect on the people of Pallion and increase pressure on the hospital and A and E department. I hope half of this will help the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, members of Sunderland. It's been very interesting hearing you briefly speak so passionately about urgent care centres. I think all of us and all councillors will know that they are extremely popular and well-used among residents of the city. They also serve a very specific purpose. They serve areas precisely like Washington and Houghton, which are suburban or semi-rural. And actually, part of the purpose of urgent care centres was to help take pressure off the NHS and GP practices in areas outside of cities. The problem being that they're here made, and actually getting rid of them is going back to the standard, creating something worse. Like many people here, I've experienced the problem with urgent care centres in Sunderland at the former site, Brindon, and also the one at Houghton this spring, and how many of them there are when you need them, as I did on Christmas Eve a few years ago. The thing I think, in addition to the quality of care, one thing I want to mention is the quality of this state. Actually, the quality of the buildings and infrastructure around Old Bunny Hill and the former site at Sandhill made it extremely convenient for people, they're very readily accessible, you know, this issue of parking springboard. We actually have it perfectly, you know, sized built into our council area. And getting going back from them is actually a real step backwards for the rest of Sunderland. Madam Mayor, Rebecca Hawkins was spot on about Pallion Health Centre in a part of the world that we both represent. It is a fantastic service at a national hospital, but it is completely inappropriate to take on the burden of closing these three sites. The problems of parking, of accessibility of that site are very clear. This issue about, you know, not only thinking you're part of there, there isn't really enough space in the waiting room for more than a handful of people, a handful of chairs, and there's no clear plans from the CCG about how this is going to be addressed. For that reason, I think it's quite obvious, and I think I can speak on behalf of the Labour End Group, that we would want to protect urgent care centres and we will be going in favour of this motion. And also, and it has been touched upon this, one concern I do have about- And also, and it has been touched upon, this, one concern I do have about it is, the motion focuses on the CCG consultation, but the consultation is, as I think we sort of suggested, a bit of a smokescreen. The plans to reorganise the CCG and the urgent care centres are mandated by NHS England. This is coming top-down. It's of course above Sunderland CCG, and in fact, as a recent Guardian article exposed, it goes right to Number 11 Downing Street, where Philip Hammond has actually, you know, forced Simon Stephens of the NHS, if he was to get anything done, he had to come out publicly to, to support something he disagrees with. It's the worst sort of pork barrel politics, actually, and really alarming about the way the government is, is forcing changes upon the NHS, even against the, the will of the NHS. Which does make me wonder, actually, why the proposals of the motion didn't have a little more of the courage of conviction to come out and call, you know, call this what it is, actually. It is, you know, top-down, a disgraceful move from, from government, and, you know, forcing something on NHS England, forcing things down onto the residents of Sunderland that they do not like, which will be a step backwards to the care that's built in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How's it doing, Your Honour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of what I was going to say is already been said, but I'd like to bring it to more of a local level. The urgent care centre is based in my old, old New Spring, and of course, to see the residents of that area and all of Waltonfield area really do regard this as a jewel in the ground where NHS care is concerned. We have a local service in the local area where people can access easily. A lot of our areas is still in deprivation and low income. To get to Pallion, there is no direct bus route that would get you there. And if you're talking, if anybody's got a car, you know, it's asking in a major situation, I'd tell them somebody seriously here to run around and try and get somebody's take from there would be just absolutely, it could be life-threatening. I'm very passionate about this, I'm very passionate about the NHS. As an ex-nurse myself, the changes I have seen is not for the good I've got to see. But I also have used Pallion Health Centre after an accident I had. You're right, councillor, it was councillor Higginson, that accessibility alone in Pallion is very hard. I had to use crutches and I had to go down steps to get into Pallion, and when I got into Pallion, there was not a seat to be found. So it is not fit for purpose, and I beg this council to do all they can to keep our urgent care centres local as they should be.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Johnson, do you mind if we talk a little?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll summarise briefly, a lot of things have already been said. Urgent care is called, is for a reason, surely, because it's named urgently. And it's quite clear from the outdated proposals from Sunderland CCG that the residents of Walton, Hitting, Washington, Bunny Hill will not have access to that service if these proposals are brought through. The discussion events have organised from the start, they've been insufficient, they've excluded residents from being able to have this here, and this is not the cause of actual harm. The specific travel and transport event in the hills, it may tell, it couldn't be any further away from the places where it would affect people the most. There's stairs that there'll be a 111 telephone service available, if you don't have access to transport, you simply bring an ambulance. I don't think I have a suitable answer to the residents of this city, that if the, that transport issues, that move for ambulance, were within the sports centre, in the window on the staff, we'd fire those, for an ambulance to come for an accident, or who fractured it. The paramedics who attended says at that time, you can't cope with the demand, the calls that's coming in. And that's how we are made. The GPs, sure, it is that we're all aware of, not just the city, but across the country, the mobilisation plan, according to press, to bring these GPs in. I don't think they're going to have the numbers to address the 14,000 extra GP appointments that's going to be offered to the residents of this city. It's been mentioned about Pallion, if somebody isn't, somebody got a call to demand this now, without an increase in the numbers from sites, at Walton, Washington, Bunny Hill, there's also lots of plans I've written to use at Bunny Hill to say, I must have their service as well. It's been mentioned, great area, is this really what the CCG is offering the residents of this city in terms of a better service of care? And I don't think we should be afraid to say, that Australia New Zealand guidelines for NHS England are leading in these proposals, and I think this should come out and say that we must have the residents of our city. Madam Mayor, I just want to also praise the work and support of all the volunteers who came out of NHS Public Sunderland branch, who have given them all the last few weeks and waited and waited on our behalf, and they're there fighting for our residents, the, the well-funded, the access to decent healthcare that we all deserve, so I'd like to, I'd be excited. This most emotional proposal, it, it doesn't have broad boundaries, and it shouldn't be biased politically. It will affect all of us, all of our communities, all of our families, all of our groups. Since this consultation started, for many residents, not just in Walton, but across Sunderland, Bunny Hill, they've told me their own personal stories, the survival of their babies, still to remain. There's been over 3,000 survivors on the leadership of Walton, and many leave comments to survive in support. Especially, I've actually read the wall, and as much as the CCG packages up the percentages in the scores that they're using, it's, the impact it's going to have on people's lives and the health that they will suffer from. I've picked a couple of comments that I just want to make before I finish. One lady simply just commented, it's vital for my three-year-old children, I don't drive, I need this service. Another lady went and said, I'm 59 years old, I live on my own, I don't have access to a car, and my family told me maybe. I was struggling with the bus fare to get to Pallion, as I'm currently out of work. I can currently walk near the care centre within five minutes, I don't know what I would do if this service was taken away. Another lady went and said, and this is how close it's becoming, it comes really, it's, when I first arrived here, we were staying at Walton Primary Care Centre. I realised things aren't great English. His life is spared because of this. Please say Walton Primary Care Centre, so it was new, he'd say it too. I think this is safe to say, this is who we stand up for, this is our start of campaign for, and this is who we're fighting for, and this is what we're all voting for tonight. So please, not just support the motion, get involved with the campaign, stand up for residents, and send a plain message to Sunderland CCG and NHS England that urgent care services need to remain in heart of our communities for the benefit of all our residents. Access to decent healthcare is the right norm in our society, and we should all obviously good colleagues, the care services post the wall. Please support the motion and save our urgent care services. Thank you.
That's all right, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I think this will be the quickest moving speech that you've probably ever heard, because I appreciate it. A lot of people have already mentioned things that, that I was already pointing before to say, which is a surprise to me, as long as I'm pretty much the gobbler mate of the day of the week. So, there we, there we go. First of all, of course, anything I would like to thank the board of the cocktail, well, for me is not something that I take lightly, or that I think a lot of people just can't take lightly, so I'd like to thank them before I do say anything. First of all, not lie for them. Of course. I'd also like to thank the key activists from Keep Our NHS Public as well. As soon as we started this campaign, the people from Keep Our NHS Public were absolutely there, was right from the start. They have the expertise on this issue, as I'm sure many members know as well, and saw my deep thanks for them, along with colleagues on the council as well, who facilitated the opposition to these proposals, to my thanks for them, for them as well. In, in terms of speaking out on these proposals, first thing I wanted to say, the, the scrutiny was the inaccessibility, as has already been mentioned, of the Pallion Health Centre. I've had a very recent experience of the Pallion Health Centre, when I experienced a concussion, no, it didn't give me any, give me any sense. But, but one thing it did was, I'm happy to be the, the strengthless pressure that Pallion Health Centre is under as it is. It took me personally five hours to be seen for a concussion on a, on Monday. And, and, and so I think that what we've got to absolutely be clear about in our own health policy is the fact that Pallion Health Centre, right at the moment, can't cope with what it has already, level of demand from our living areas in the city as well. One of the things I'd like to mention about the extended access GP services, and I think it's been alluded to perhaps once before, is that actually, this is, this is quite odd, because I'm, I'm sure many people understand, that a GP does not fulfil the same responsibilities as urgent care fulfils. And so, the only thing that I can see from these proposals is that it will actually drive down standards of healthcare within, within the city, and within my area as well. And so that's not something that I could put support under any means at all. I think what these proposals are, as has been mentioned, are part of a systematic attempt by the government to, of course, attack the National Health Service. Budgets are being stretched, and I think services can only get, under those circumstances, worse for my residents, the people that I represent, some of which are incredibly vulnerable indeed. And so I urge members of this chamber tonight, there will be many more speeches from me, I'm sure, which I do this, but on a, on a quote of principle and on a quote of conscience to support the motion tonight and send a distinct message. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Conservatives have already said that they will support this motion, which, if I may say, was very ably proposed by councillor, councillor Chekka. In saying, so we would, of course, reiterate that what we must be aiming at is the best for residents of Sunderland. This is, of course, a local decision by the, by the CCG, committing doctrine, and it is, of course, not entirely to finance, so, of course, one would admit that that is going to be a consideration. The second point that I was going to make, of course, is this is a very early consultation, there's a very long time to go before the end of the consultation. So on those two points, I would say, we are very happy to support the motion.
Thank you very much, your honour. And your councillor, Daryl Dixon wishes to speak. Do you wish to speak as well, councillor Chekka?
Yes, I would.
I think councillor Daryl Dixon would like to speak. Very likely, you're right. Would you like to speak now?
Can't do it.
And let's check that is constitutional.
Is it not? I'm sorry. I've made off these. We're constitutionally, not to lie, ladies.
It's right.
I'm not for the people's. Councillor, this councillor, Daryl Dixon, makes a speech, just sort of, I'm, he wishes to make after. No, you can't do it. Councillor Chekka, would you like to speak? And councillor Daryl Dixon.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody in this chamber for their comments this evening and their, their contributions to why I think it's been a very emotional discussion, giving the passion that people in this chamber have for the care that the residents of their representative, something that I take very, very positively. I know people in this chamber that feel, and I know that even others that haven't spoken have been part of the campaigns in their wars, and for that, I'd like to thank everybody. Particularly the people that have spoken, I think councillor Higginson's raised excellent talks in relation to Pallion Hall. I don't think anybody could have suffered any mental, and I've got wishes for those etc, so thank you about that. And councillor Pallion, I'd really like to highlight the point of access and GP, and the fact that I know every person that we speak to on the matter raises back our concerns. And you're right, the extended access service is already in existence, this is a community that is easy to expose. The extended access hours, GP, already exists. Nobody knows if I'm on it, nobody knows if it exists, so my worry moving forward, that will not be utilized, I think we'll call an ambulance if it's in the air. But, but I would like to respond to your point in relation to the motion, the motion firstly, saying that we would have a judicial review, and we're very happy to take this away, this is not just a matter of local CCG, we appreciate this is a national initiative, a national drive from, from central government, and we will happily take it wherever it needs to go, with the support of our Keep Our NHS Public colleagues, who, as you know, along with many of the councillors in this chamber, have successfully made the referrals, and you took them, and you've saved full path for excellence, we're going to follow them in the future, I hope. Councillor Heron, I really appreciate it, and you said in relation to your experience and other things, that, because that's exactly what people within our discussions have said, and the words you use, local sources to local people, and that's exactly what we need. Councillor Johnson, thank you so much for raising the pressure on ambulance services, and I'm pleased that somebody did, because it's clear that people, there are these massive health inequalities in this consultation, goes the way of the CCG, because people are, people are vulnerable, are going to suffer. Now, it is more interesting to talk about ambulance service, cannot cope with the demands that they have at the moment, and we know there is a shortage of GPs, we know there is a shortage of quality, coming up to our 111 centres, and now our pharmacy services need to be approved, and they will not be able to pick up the slack if the CCG goes ahead. So, thank you for that. And obviously, thank you for Jack, and well done on your very first speech. Councillor Oliver, this is a local decision, I think you all know this is driven by NHS England, so I think I raise that point in relation to councillor Austin, and we will be challenging it at that every level. And I think it's sad to say from here, perhaps if that, what we'll be doing alongside our Keep Our NHS Public colleagues who have been driving, of course, in this. And I would just like to conclude, but it's not the beginning of a long consultation. This consultation ends on the 12th of August, that is nearly weeks away, but it's not the end of our process, it will need to be acting now in relation to this. So, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for that. Councillor Daryl Dixon, if you wish to add to my remarks to your podium.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this, I'm not here speaking tonight either for or against the motion. As the Chair of the Health and Scrutiny, Health and Wellbeing Scrutiny Committee, I just wish to clarify the position from members of the committee in relation to the notice of motion on urgent care that we've debated tonight. There is, of course, conflict of interest. Members of the scrutiny committees are required to be, first of all, non-political, but also to be objective and to be open-minded in their deliberations in order to secure the best possible outcome that they can for the people of Sunderland. Now, it's clear from the motion that there is a wish for constructive consultation to take place with the CCG. And it is recognised that members of the Health and Wellbeing Scrutiny Committee have an important and formal role to play in respect of the process, and that it's important that they undertake the determination of their response to the proposals of the CCG with an open mind, having considered any additional information which becomes available, including the responses to the consultation and the outcome of the liaison with the CCG which is proposed by the motion. Now, now we come to it. If a member of the Health and Wellbeing Scrutiny Committee should then participate in the scrutiny meeting, which would then agree the formal response to the CCC proposals, having previously voted in favour of this motion at council to oppose the proposals, there is a real risk that they would be considered to have had a closed mind and not have been partial in their consideration of the matter. In the circumstances, members of the Health and Wellbeing Scrutiny Committee may wish to refrain from commenting on the proposals at this stage of the process and to abstain from boarding on the motion in order to facilitate the continuing scrutiny process. from boarding on the motion in order to facilitate the continuing scrutiny process and to avoid any future issues regarding predetermination, giving validity to the eventual full response to the CCG that we must have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, councillor Dixon, to offer us a number of solid words, please.
Yes, of course, yes. Thank you very much indeed, councillor Dixon. We will now report and go back on the motion. Madam Mayor, there are 54 votes in favour, nine abstentions and no votes against, therefore the motion is carried. The left had a right report, which should be given to the board for the release level in special urgency decisions, and the report together is a supplementary report, the approach to the municipal office. Peter, please read the report and supplement the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Special urgency decisions, no such instance in the current system of law, and the appointments committee, let's say, board is supplementary report prepared by the head of the local governance, is truly laid out and it's quite substantial, so I'll just move the others as well.
I'll second your point, and do you want me to speak?
And we can, and we all want to speak.
Just to finish, councillor, with a long personal attack of councillor Hallam. Simply to, to point out to us the leader of the council that on the first set of appointments in the original council document, a reason is given why each appointment has to change, but on the supplementary report of appointments, no reason is given for any of the changes, which is unusual. Could I ask if you and councillor Hallam is able to give an explanation?
Councillor Hallam, I think your question, excellent, we can, we can both of them together.
Thanks very much, I'd like to make amendments to recommendations, supplementary reports, finally. And I'm going to move now, yes, it's on item 15, I'd like to move that on the general board. It's like, now, these are all majority group vacancies, as set out in the annual council of not-for-debate discussion, into majority group vacancies, councillor Hallam, the Liberal Democrats, I view that they have their allocation, the power of majority group, our allocation into majority group vacancies, and it should be on the social level. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And generally, it's a nice type of policy, myself, I'd like to move it, amend, as a matter of fact.
I'm reading a vice, and we did that to the outside.
Sorry, to reiterate, that's item 15, I'd like to move that on the general operations committee, that the appointment of Alex Samuels is replaced with that on the morning as well.
Is that second, councillor?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
By post mortem, I think it's due, we believe, to councillor Samuels.
As it's number 58, it's not 40. It's 40. Just say one time. Sorry, it is I'm not personally to, to this, to our terms, but I mean, that, that given the direct criticism of the actions and management of this specific committee by the government regulator, I'd like the new leadership to turn over new leaf and put some opposition scrutiny on the general board.
We have had in harsh last, we had one of us.
Is voting the vote?
No, we're voting the vote, thank you. Yes, we are ready. On their approval, they have got sections of 55 rules against their voluntary measures to be featured. Peter, you cover right of the flag.
I won't reply to the point that we just voted on because there was no clarity, it was just nonsense, but I will just say to councillor Hallam, since he asked, there's no detail, it's internal to the Labour Party, but our position, councillor Hallam, so I would like that to be clear to anyone who's in the audience.